Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our regularly scheduled Friday morning, February 8th, citywide Select Committee on Mandatory Housing Affordability. It is 9:37 on Friday morning. I'm Rob Johnson, Chair of the Committee. With me are Councilmembers Mesquita Gonzalez, Council President Harrell, Councilmember Herbold. Thank you all for being here. I imagine we'll have a couple of other folks join us this morning. And welcome, Councilmember Bagshaw. Thank you. This morning, we are going to proceed through a series of 80 different amendments. We're going to start with a series of text amendments that are not specific to individual geographies, and then we're going to go through by district the individual map amendments proposed by council members. As part of our discussion for today, I'm cribbing a little bit from our budgeting process. What I'm going to do as we go through these amendments is I'm going to start by asking central staff members to explain the amendment. Secondarily, I'm going to ask the sponsor if they'd like to speak to it. Thirdly, I'll ask if there's any discussion or any questions from my colleagues. And lastly, I'll ask if anybody would like to add their name as a co-sponsor. As you can imagine, as we go through 80 amendments, the more brief those discussions could be, the faster that we can all get out of here and avoid the snowpocalypse that's coming. However, I will also add that in order to make the process in the future go more swiftly, if there's not a large-scale discussion about an amendment, I'm planning to roll a lot of those consensus amendments into one large consensus amendment for discussion when we do have a vote on February the 25th. So my plan is to sort of assess the room and assess the response to these individual amendments, and if they are not controversial, then on the 25th, we'll start with a discussion of what would be a broad-scale amendment that is a roll-up of a large number of amendments that have some consensus. We'll talk more about the logistics of how we'll handle that on the 25th, but that's how I'm planning to handle our discussion this morning. So with that, as a reminder to members of the public, we've got two more Select Committee meeting discussions this month. A sixth evening public hearing here at City Hall on Thursday, February 21st, starting at 5:30. And then a meeting to vote on potential amendments and underlying pieces of legislation on Monday, February 25th, at 2:30 PM, or directly following our regularly scheduled council meeting that day. So welcome, Councilmember O'Brien. And without further ado, Noah On, would you please read the abbreviated title of our three items into the agenda for today?
Agenda items 1 through 3. Council Bill 119443, An Ordnance Relating to Land Use, Amending the Seattle Comprehensive Plan to Incorporate Changes Related to Mandatory Housing Affordability as Proposed as Part of the 2019 Comprehensive Plan Annual Amendment Process. Council Bill 119444, An Ordnance Relating to Land Use, Relating to Mandatory Housing Affordability, MHA, Rezoning Certain Land and Modifying Development Standards Throughout the City, Implementing MHA Requirements and Modifying Existing Development Standards to Improve Livability, and Amending Adding, Repealing, and Recodifying Sections of the Seattle Municipal Code. And Council Bill 119445, An Ordnance Relating to Land Use and Zoning, Amending Chapter 23.32 of the Seattle Municipal Code to Rezone Land in the Northgate Urban Center and Adding Sections, Amending and Adding Sections of the Seattle Municipal Code.
Well done, Mr. On. We've got the entirety of our central staff land use team at the table. Why don't we start with introductions, Ms. Penucci?
Ally Penucci, Council Central Staff.
Eric McConaughey, Council Central Staff.
Kedal Freeman, Council Central Staff.
Council Central Staff.
Liz Schwitzen, Council Central Staff.
Thank you all. Why don't we start with the walking through of the proposed text amendments unless there are any opening remarks you'd like to give, Ms. Penucci?
Thank you. I'd just like to go over a few things of how we'll organize the discussion today, and then we'll jump into the text amendments. But please stop me if you have any questions. As described by the Chair, today we will discuss amendments sponsored by council members. This includes changes to the text of the Land Use Code as well as changes to the proposed zoning map changes. We will start by discussing the specific text amendments found in Appendix 1 to the memo. That's page 5 through 104. I want to note that the specific code language is still in, is still being drafted. We'll continue to work with executive staff and our law department and council members to finalize the amendment language prior to the potential committee vote on February 25th. So the specifics of that language may be modified between now and the meeting on the 25th. Following the discussion of the text amendments, we'll walk through proposed map amendments found on page 105 through 172 of the memo in Attachment 2. The complete set of map changes that are proposed in the introduced council bill can be found online and is linked in the memo. Today's discussion focuses on areas where council members have proposed a specific zoning change to the initial proposal. I want to note that yesterday, the Office of Planning and Community Development released the addendum to the final environmental impact statement that addresses the hearing examiner remand and concludes the environmental work for the proposal. The addendum is complimentary to the historic resource analysis and information that was found in the final EIS. Over the coming weeks, we will work with council members to identify any additional changes they may want to make based on the complimentary information provided in the addendum. In addition to the text and map amendments included in the memo is an outline for the companion resolution that's included in Attachment 3 to the memo, starting on page 173. So concurrent with the three pieces of legislation, council will be adopting that resolution, recognizing that implementation of the citywide MHA land use code changes alone is not sufficient to achieve all of the goals of Seattle's neighborhoods. This resolution communicates council's commitment to either taking action itself or requesting that the mayor and executive departments carry out a variety of citywide initiatives. The issues identified in Attachment 3 are not exhaustive and are not a complete set of items that may be included in the companion resolution. Central staff will continue to work with council members to identify content for that resolution, and will post a draft of the resolution in advance of the public hearing so the public has an opportunity to review and comment at that hearing. So unless there are questions, I'll move on to the text amendments. Great. So we will be working from the table on page 5 of the memo. The First Amendment is A1, and it is an amendment that will allow additions to existing buildings in residential small lot zones above the maximum net unit area. The proposal would restrict the maximum unit size for a dwelling unit in RSL zones to 2,200 square feet. This would allow structures that exist today to do small additions, or if you're a single-story house, to do an addition directly above.
I have nothing to add. Questions?
I'd like to co-sponsor.
Please, co-sponsor, Councilmember Mesquita.
Likewise.
And Councilmember Gonzalez. Amendment 2.
Amendment A2, Apartment Structures in RSL Zones. So the proposal limits the number of units in an apartment development in residential small lot zones to three dwelling units. In addition to this restriction, there are also density limits that apply in RSL zones, height limits, yard, or setback requirements, floor area requirements, and that sort of thing. This amendment would modify the absolute limit on the number of apartments in RSL zones. So there are two options for the committee's consideration. Option 1, sponsored by Councilmember Johnson, would remove the absolute limit on the number of units in an apartment development, and on larger lots would allow more than, more than three units. Option 2 would increase the absolute limit on the number of units in an apartment structure to allow a four-unit apartment building.
And welcome, Councilmember Juarez. Thank you for joining us. Councilmember O'Brien, anything you'd like to add?
The distinction in my mind between the two amendments, Ally, maybe you can do the math for me. To do a four-unit, to have a large enough lot to do four units in RSL would be just under 8,000 square feet lot.
Correct.
So that's a pretty large lot, which, you know, I'm sure a handful exist like that, and I know people could buy multiple lots and combine them. The current limit under the proposed legislation that only allows three would mean a typical building type that we see, we've seen historically, which is a four-unit apartment building. Looks like a house, but it's got four doors, and you have two units right and left downstairs, and two units right and left upstairs. Seems like a nice building type for the RSL. So expanding it to four would allow that building type on those rare occasions where there is a lot that size that makes sense. So I think that's why I'm pushing for that. If someone had a really large lot, you know, 12,000, 14,000, 16,000 square feet, the distinction would be you'd build two four-unit buildings as opposed to one eight-unit building, which in my mind might fit in more with the character of what I think RSL would be promoting. At the same time, the, I don't suspect we're going to see a lot of RSL development on 12,000-square-foot lots, so I'm not sure the distinction makes a big difference, but that's my option 2.
I would like to support you in this, but Councilmember Johnson, can you talk about, if we did option 1, which appears to have your name on it, that it would allow on larger lots, development of more than three units, but it would be size-dependent and design-dependent?
Correct.
So can you just describe the difference between the two?
There's a number of factors that limit the possibility of development within proposed lot size, square footage, including things like our floor area ratio, things like design standards and setbacks. I think this is a small philosophical difference between Councilmember O'Brien and myself that I would ask maybe for our colleagues' leave to have the two of us continue to work over the next couple of weeks on a proposal that would garner support from the two of us. This doesn't feel like it's a hard one to work out.
Good. Well, I would really appreciate the two of you doing that, and I'd like to add my name to this.
Okay. Further questions, discussions? Councilmember Mesquita?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to the co-sponsor, or the two sponsors of these amendments. I support the effort to try to find common ground between the two. I do want to emphasize, as you're having conversations, the desire to make sure that there are no limits, so that we're not back in the same situation trying to amend unit or by unit or limits every year, I think would be helpful for us in the future. So I was prepared to support your amendment, Mr. Johnson or Mr. Chair, but I'm happy to have you guys work it out.
Great. Further discussions?
I'll just add that, again, the existing legislation or my proposal, there's no limit on the lot. It's just how many units in one building is that.
In an apartment structure specifically, yeah.
Yeah. And so, but I'm confident we can find something, and we'll chat with everyone.
Okay, so I'm going to call that not a consensus item for discussion on, at our meeting on February 25th, and we'll bring forward an amendment for individual vote on that day. Ms. Penucci, Amendment 3.
Amendment 3. This is related to accessory dwelling unit requirements in residential small lot zones. The proposed legislation in general applies the same standards that exist today in single-family zones for accessory dwelling units to the RSL zone with a few minor exceptions. One is that all ADUs must be located in the same structure or behind the principal dwelling unit, and regulations about the height of exterior stairs. This amendment would remove those additional requirements that would apply in RSL zones, but not in single-family zones, and allow the standards to be the same at the time when this, when the council is considering accessory dwelling unit legislation at some point, hopefully later this spring. There may be further discussion about reasons and justifications for distinguishing some of the requirements for accessory dwelling units, but this would put both zones at the same starting point.
Any questions?
I'd like to add my name to it.
Yes. Okay, so a couple of folks supporting, so Councilmember Herbold, Gonzalez, Bagshaw, Mesquita. So I'm going to call that a consensus discussion. A4.
A4. A4 is related to garage standards in RSL zones. This amendment would apply the same standards for garage entrances that are applicable in other single-family zones. The proposed legislation, as introduced, would, could allow for a row of front-facing garages for certain development types. So this would just require some more creative design thinking for the developer to avoid having a just row of front-facing garages along the sidewalk or street.
I have nothing to add. Any questions? Nope. So Councilmember Gonzalez is a co-sponsor on that one.
And Councilmember O'Brien as well.
I'm going to call that a consensus item. A5.
A5 relates to the density limits in RSL zones. So as was discussed in a previous amendment, the proposed legislation applies a density limit in RSL zones of one dwelling unit per 2,000 square feet. In looking at the lots that are proposed to be rezoned to RSL, there are a number of lots that are so small that they would, it would not allow for those, those lots to add a second dwelling unit. So what this amendment would do would allow for any lot within an RSL zone to achieve at least two units. There are yard requirements, height limits, FAR requirements, that would still limit the overall bulk of the building, but this would just allow for a smaller lot to have a duplex.
I think as we continue to discuss what the future of residential small lot looks like, this allows for, I think, a shared set of goals here that keeps the principal structure intact, but allows for a small-scale cottage to be built in the backyard. I think that's the intent of this, but Councilmember O'Brien?
And the date in here would mean that someone couldn't come along a year from now and subdivide a lot into really small and then get two. It just would allow existing lots?
Correct.
Further discussion or questions? Okay, so I'm seeing some co-sponsors, Councilmembers Mesquita, Bagshaw, Gonzalez. We'll call that a consensus amendment. A6, Ms. Penucci, is that still you?
I am, I think I'm turning this over to Kedal.
So moving from development standards for residential small lot zones to multifamily zones, A6 would amend the density limit for small sites in low-rise zones to allow slightly more development on a, on a site. The proposed bill would remove many density limits that apply in, in low-rise zones, but maintain a density limit for smaller lots, lots less than 3,000 square feet. This would amend that density limit to allow development, slightly more development on smaller sites.
Questions about that, colleagues? Okay. Councilmember Mesquita as a co-sponsor. Councilmember Gonzalez as well. We'll call that a consensus item. A7, Mr. Freeman.
So under the proposed code and under existing regulations, certain features can exceed the height limit of the zone, including pitched roofs. This amendment would modify the pitch of roofs that can exceed the height limit so that they can be slightly flatter.
Questions about that? I'm going to call that a consensus item. A8, Mr. Freeman.
Amendment A8 would harmonize incentive zoning regulations for high-rise development in First Hill with the Mandatory Housing Affordability Program. This is an amendment that Councilmember Bagshaw is sponsoring. Under the proposed legislation, incentive zoning provisions in First Hill would be entirely replaced by mandatory housing affordability. Under incentive zoning provisions, up to 40% of extra residential floor area for high-rise development in First Hill can be, can be achieved through purchase of transferable development rights, green street improvements, and open space improvements. This would retain the ability for development in First Hill to achieve extra residential floor area through those means.
Councilmember Bagshaw, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, this is supported by our First Hill Improvement Association, by multiple faith institutions. Thank you all for being here, and I just want to recognize that this particular area is dense and becoming more so. What they lack is green space and parks, and having the incentive zoning that will include public benefits. I think it's a very important aspect of this, so I support this and welcome. Any co-sponsors?
Questions from folks, co-sponsors? Council President Harrell and myself. I'm going to call that a consensus item. A9, Mr. Freeman.
A9, we may be bouncing around a little bit as we, we split the workload a bit. A9 requires, is about requirements to meet green building standards in multifamily zones. Under the existing code, projects in multifamily zones can achieve extra floor area by meeting a green building standard and providing additional public benefits such as screening parking or providing affordable housing. The proposal to implement MHA would increase the FAR limits in, in these zones and would just set a base above which green building standards are required. And so there is a helpful diagram on page 38 of the memo that provides an example of how this works, but essentially, if today, under today's code, the maximum FAR in a low-rise one zone is 1.1. But if you're building above a 0.9 FAR limit, you have to meet the green building requirement as well as provide those other, other public benefits to, to reach the 1.1 height. The MHA proposal increases the floor area limit to 1.3. And so what, and in that change, it says anything above a 0.9 FAR limit, you have to meet the green building requirement. So to achieve the additional floor area you can get today, as well as the additional floor area that is added through the MHA legislation, you have to meet the green building requirement. What this, what this amendment would do is it would raise the bar slightly of the FAR limit above which you have to meet the green building requirement. So essentially, under existing code, in order to gain the .2 FAR increase, you have to meet a green building standard. This resets it to that same requirement so that you only have to meet the green building standard to achieve the additional .2 FAR.
This one's obviously very self-explanatory.
I could try that again.
No, 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 Ms. Penucci. I think if, if councilmembers wanted to dig into more details on this one, I would encourage them to do so, but I think the simplest way to say this is that we want to try to continue to incentivize more green buildings, but we don't want to give it away. So this creates a higher, a slightly higher threshold for the performance of a building standard, and doesn't automatically give it away when you actually do the MHA FAR increase that you get through MHA. So from my perspective, it's, this may be one that we need to pull out for individual discussion because this could result in a little further, because of the quizzical looks that I'm getting from a lot of my colleagues. But why don't, why don't we pause and see if there are actual questions absent my joking on this topic? And if there are not, then what I would suggest is that this is a media enough topic that we keep this one for an individual vote and discussion when we circle back around on the 25th.
I'll hold my questions.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. So let's do an individual vote on that one when we come back around on the 25th. Please, Councilmember Mesquita.
I just want to co-sponsor it. I also want to indicate, we've heard a lot of support for this from folks who want to do more passive house construction. Just saw the first passive house apartment last week in District 2, so I think this is a great one. Look forward to the discussion.
Okay. A10.
Okay, so this is the small commercial space requirement. This amendment is based on some other standards that are already existing and similar to the Pike Pine Conservation Overlay District. There are development standards that require that new development include spaces for small commercial uses. So development, over five, that new development in pedestrian zones, over 5,000 square feet would be required to provide small commercial spaces and kind of creating more opportunities for affordable commercial space. We have a couple of options here, sponsored by various council members. Option 1 is sponsored by Councilmember, Councilmembers O'Brien and Herbold. This option would require that these small commercial spaces be permanent. And option 2, sponsored by Chair Johnson, would, would allow for these spaces to have a five-year expiration.
Things that people want to add to that? Councilmember O'Brien, Councilmember Herbold?
I just want to speak to the fact that amendments like these were also used for discussion purposes during the university district discussions of upzones on, on the AV. We did hold that, that upzone, and these types of amendments, I think, would address some of the concerns that we've heard both in that district as, as well as in other commercial districts about the concern of a loss of affordable spaces, affordable commercial spaces. I did recall, though, that there was a suite of other amendments that accompanied this, so I just want to signal, signal my interest in maybe looking back, because I think there were about three or four different options, and I want, just want to make sure that we're covering our bases, but this is, I think, a good first step.
And I think one of the other things to add here, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Ho, is that this applies only to principal pedestrian streets within those zones.
That's correct.
So we're going to, we're going to be discussing later applying the pedestrian designation to several corridors throughout the city, but we also, in addition to that, apply principal pedestrian streets within those pedestrian zones. So this applies to a limited number of commercial spaces just on those principal pedestrian streets within neighborhood commercial zones with a pedestrian designation. Councilmember O'Brien?
Yeah, I think the, in my mind, I think the policy distinction between the two options here, both decent policy objectives that I just want to weigh out. By having the time limited, what that would allow for, my understanding would be, existing or new small businesses could locate in one of these small spaces, and as that small business grew, they may want to expand into adjacent spaces, and if that coincided with the time limit, could, could stay in place essentially by expanding into neighborhood spaces, which I think is a legitimate policy objective. The flip side, though, is that as they expand, those spaces are no longer small for that next generation of small businesses. And by not having a time limit, we would say, look, if you're a small business and you start to grow and need to get a different space, you would need to find another space to vacate that existing small business so that the next small business could come into it. I lean towards the latter one, which is why I'm sponsoring that amendment, and I, but I certainly understand the desire, but I think, I do feel that having, this is a challenge that we're going to face on an ongoing effort, and so having some permanent small spaces, I think, would be a good thing.
I think given the back and forth and the interest, Councilmember Herbold, and having additional thoughts and questions expressed on this one should result in us having an individual vote on this one the next time around. I apologize, Councilmember Gonzalez, please. Feel free to do your.
I will hold my questions, since this will be subject to more conversation, but I have policy, I think there are several policy questions around, and we need some additional data, like for example, what is the current percentage of, you know, 5,000-plus square-foot commercial space in some of these areas that we're looking at applying MHA to? And, and really sort of what I'm looking at is, is what is the case for permanency in this space? I am inclined to support Councilmember O'Brien and Herbold's amendment to require these smaller commercial affordable spaces to be permanent, really on the sole basis that I feel like we've lost a lot of small commercial affordable space, and, and we've lost that to the construction of very large, unaffordable commercial space. And so I think there's a question to be had that could be better informed by some additional information about the stock and what is currently in, in the market before we make this decision.
Great. So we'll hold that one for an individual vote when we get back to it on the 25th. Okay. A11.
A11 is related to the Pike Pine Overlay. It currently has a provision that allows a 15% FAR increase for projects that include house, 50% of their floor area in house, housing affordable to households less than 80% of area median income. The legislation proposes to delete that provision, and this amendment would retain it.
Councilmember O'Brien, anything to add? Any other co-sponsors interested in that one? Councilmember Herbold? I'm going to call that a consensus, so we'll add that to the consensus package. A12.
A12 is upper-level setback requirements along University Way Northeast. Building on what Councilmember Herbold was saying, this is also similarly coming out of the discussions from the university district rezone from a few years ago. At that time, there was a proposal to rezone the AV to SM 85, or the Seattle Mix Zone 85 or 75 feet. At the time the council decided to hold any changes along the AV, this, and requested that a proposal come back with the citywide MHA proposal. The proposal now is to, to maintain the neighborhood commercial zone and increase the height to 73 feet, but it didn't include an upper-level setback requirement that would have been incorporated in the Seattle Mix Zone. So this amendment would require that when buildings are built above 45 feet in height, that there is an upper-level setback. This helps sort of at the street level, maintain, maintain the more pedestrian scaled character of those buildings, but still allows additional development capacity in the zone.
Questions about that, colleagues? Councilmember O'Brien?
Sorry, what, the set, how big a setback is it?
A setback with an average depth of 10 feet from the street lot line would be required above a height of 45 feet.
Okay. And so, and the average, does that mean you have no setback for the first 10 feet and then a 20-foot setback above that, or is it more like a sloped liney thing that you have to stay within, or?
That's a good question. I need to sort of look into that a little bit more, but it requires a setback above 40, above 45 feet, and typically, in some cases, they do a deeper setback in certain areas to create sort of a.
An undulating.
Like a, yeah, like a rooftop amenity space or that sort of thing, so it's the averaging of those areas, but I can follow up with additional information.
Got it. I fully support this. I think that this is an appropriate place to do that, and I think it, it helps mitigate some of the concerns we've heard from folks, so it's, list me as a co-sponsor.
Great. Great. So that's Councilmember Bagshaw, Gonzalez, and Herbold as co-sponsors, so I'm going to call that a consensus agenda item. A13.
A13 is development standards for live-work units. This amendment would require additional development standards for units that are proposed as live-works, live-work units. It would establish a minimum size of 300 square feet that is designated as the war. It would establish a minimum size of 300 square feet that is designated as the work portion of the unit. That aligns with requirements for the minimum size for a small commercial space and require a physical divider between the live and work portions of the unit. The intent of these changes is to improve the privacy for the residential function and ensure that the front of the, of these spaces are used for business purposes and ideally create a more sort of activated pedestrian environment at the, at the front, at the street level.
Like one of the challenges that we've seen in the implementation of some of the live-work units, particularly townhouses in what would be traditionally neighborhood commercial zones is that though there may be a business that operates out of there, it's difficult to, to understand that or see it. And so I think this is intending to try to incentivize more actual open businesses that, you know, you might want to walk past or walk into as opposed to what we see right now, which is a lot of leaded glass as you walk past a lot of those live-work units.
Did we do the same set of amendments with the Queen, was it the Queen Anne MHA upzone?
I believe that that's correct, Councilmember Herbold. I believe your memory of that is accurate, but I looked to our experts at the central staff table to see if that is their recollection as well.
They look very confused. They do look confused, all right.
Do you know that the, the standards for live-work units have been modified several times during the pedestrian zone changes? There were some tweaks made. This takes it a little bit further because with those changes, we haven't seen the, the results that were intended. And so this just requires a little bit more to ensure that there's clearly work and live space defined in the units.
I would support that.
Okay, Councilmember Herbold as a cosponsor. Council President Harrell, Councilmember Gonzalez.
A quick question. I support this. I have a question. Sometimes I have heard from developers and people living downtown that we require commercial space in areas where it's difficult to find renters for that commercial space. Is it possible also, and maybe this is part of the, what has already been dealt with, but that some of those units could become live-work units even though that they are identified as commercial?
In, in some cases where commercial space is allowed at the ground level, live-work can qualify. But in most cases, when there's actually a street level requirement for commercial uses, live-work, like in pedestrian zones, doesn't meet that requirement. And the reason is that in general, the live-work units don't provide the same street activation. And so over the years, the council, or excuse me, the city has, and, you know, legislated by the council, sort of narrowed the areas where those requirements apply so they're not as broad as they once, once were. But it's trying to balance ensuring that over the long term, we continue to have spaces for neighborhood-serving businesses in neighborhoods because when the residential market is very hot, there is a desire for, to just build residential units because they lease up very quickly or sell very, sell very quickly. But in the long term, if all buildings are built with only residential, there won't be amenities left. And so it's a, it's a bit of a balancing act. So in some cases, live-work qualifies and in other areas, it does not.
So I'm wondering whether we should consider loosening up the live-work requirements. So for example, if you, if you have commercial space that hasn't been rented for a certain amount of time, to do what you're proposing here, that you've got commercial in front, but allow some residential behind dividing up the space. And maybe I'm getting too complicated here, but it strikes me that the more options we can give to both have smaller spaces for commercial if needed and more residential space is a good thing.
We hear you. So I think that that seems like an opportunity for a possible new amendment to bring forward and I'll ask central staff to keep working with you on that content.
Thank you.
A-14?
A-14 is cosponsored by Council President Harrell and Councilmember O'Brien. This is related to the new Seattle Mixed Rainier Beach Zone proposed around the Rainier Beach Light Rail Station. That area would include new street-level parking standards. And this amendment would target those, that greater flexibility for surface parking only to projects that include the types of economic development projects that the community is seeking to support through that overlay, through that district.
Look to the sponsors to see if they have anything to add. Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes, I'll just say that there's been a clear request from folks in the Rainier Beach neighborhood who've been working for a number of years on trying to establish some economic opportunities. And the ideas they have would, would require a certain type of vehicle access that's, what we would not typically put in a neighborhood commercial zone. And I think the original language kind of had a blanket allowance for this to happen across the zone. And I think that for certain uses, it makes a lot of sense, but for other uses that we might see in, you know, around light rail stations anywhere, we prefer to not have a surface parking lot in front of the building. And so in conversations with, specifically with the Rainier Beach Action Coalition, they said that, that this language would allow them the flexibility to go forward as they're looking for sites to do a project. And I think it would still preserve more broadly the type of urban design we'd like to see in that neighborhood. So there may be a little bit inconsistency from property to property, but I think that flexibility is appropriate in this case.
Anything you'd like to add, Council President?
Just to be very specific, that what we're trying to encourage, of course, are certain types of activity, light manufacturing, colleges, childcare centers, food processing work, fine art schools, vocational schools, et cetera. And so we're trying to encourage that kind of development, but still, still create a pedestrian-friendly environment. So I think this reaches the right balance between parking needs and economic development in a community that is prepared for it, so.
Further questions or thoughts, colleagues? I'm going to call that a consensus item for the 25th and congratulations, we're halfway through the text amendments, folks. A-15?
A-15 is preschool uses. This is sponsored by councilmembers Musquita and Gonzalez. So we noted that in several sections of the council bill as introduced, there are certain benefits granted to projects that included preschools that do not apply to projects that include childcare centers. And in the land use code, childcare center is a broader term that includes preschool. So this amendment would replace the term preschool with childcare center to include, encourage the inclusion of childcare centers in new development rather than just preschools.
Anything from the sponsors? Councilwoman Musquita?
I'm really excited about including this. I hope that folks on the council are supportive. When I was in D1 a few weeks ago, I asked every single business that we went to, would you be supportive of incentives to ensure that there was space for childcare on the first or second floors? And overwhelmingly, every single person was very supportive, both for them as individuals who live in the neighborhood, but also for their workers to make sure that childcare is accessible. And as folks know here, on average, Seattle is the highest cost childcare in the country, especially for infant care. As we look at expanding options for folks to live in the city, we also want to make sure that it's affordable for them to have childcare. So increasing the supply of childcare facilities near residential and commercial spaces, I think, makes a lot of sense and will save our residents a ton of money in the end without having to commute.
Councilmember Gonzalez, anything to add?
Yeah, I would just, I would just add that there have been a lot of studies that have come out last year that really talk and highlight about a phrase referred to often as childcare deserts. And this is the concept that in places where there are families who need childcare needs are experiencing an extreme shortage of both childcare providers and childcare-friendly spaces for those childcare providers to actually set up a childcare center. And of course, that sort of sets, that's separate, but also related to the issue of the lack of affordability of childcare in our cities. So I, I feel like we have a real responsibility and a real opportunity through this process to incentivize and require that these spaces be created as one tool of many that will be needed to address the realities of childcare centers and childcare deserts. And Washington State is not immune from this concept. We have, we unfortunately rank very high in terms of the states being ranked as childcare deserts. And I think this is a common sense policy for us to support, particularly in conjunction with the work that we're doing in my committee around the Families Education, Preschool and Promise levy that is going to hopefully also support the development of a pipeline of additional childcare workers. And we're also doing some work at the state level in the state legislature to hopefully modify some of the restrictions that are currently in place that make it really difficult for childcare providers or people who want to get into the childcare provider industry from actually doing so because many of those regulations, land use regulations and whatnot are designed for suburban or rural childcare facilities and are creating significant problems in terms of generating additional childcare, childcare deserts here in Seattle.
So I saw a cosponsor hands from Council President Harrell and Councilmember Bagshaw, but, and Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Bagshaw, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just adding one more phrase, and that is yesterday in Seattle Times, there was an excellent op-ed acknowledging the fact that the demand for childcare is far outstripping supply resulting in astronomical costs of roughly $12,000 per year and year-long wait lists for childcare. So anything that we can do to help promote this, I'm in.
I know several folks that would be delighted to be only paying $12,000 a year for childcare. So A-16, I'm going to call that a consensus item and we'll move on to A-16.
Okay, so A-16 is additional tree regulations. And this is cosponsored by Chair Johnson and Councilmember O'Brien. So based on the kind of building upon some of the work we did in the Planning, Land Use and Zoning Committee last year in terms of drafting a tree protection ordinance, this is kind of looking at some of that work and incorporating it where it's appropriate in the MHA bill. And so this amendment would actually increase the, so there is a new tree score requirement that is accompanying the residential small lot for new development. And this amendment looks to increase the tree score requirement. Thus, that would result in more trees being planted or preserved with new development and would also potentially create a new fee and lieu option for satisfying tree planting requirements, add protections for trees that are planted to meet these planting requirements in RSL and require arborists working with the city to be certified by the International Society of Arbor, Arbor Culture in terms of creating tree preservation plans.
Excellent pronunciation, Ms. Ho. Questions, thoughts? Please, Councilmember Bagshaw.
One quick question. I will support this. I'm very interested in our Urban Forestry Commission's response that we received yesterday. Has this been incorporated in the language, do you know? Specifically?
Not yet.
Okay, I'd like to make sure that we take a look at it. Specifically, what they have added is that to allow fee and lieu shall be paid to the city to replace and maintain the tree or trees in neighborhoods where they were removed. Clearly, there's a balance between keeping the, the trees that we really regard as special, but also making sure that we're able to continue to plant in other areas and have the money and resources to do that. So I'd just like to ask that we take a look at the Urban Forestry Commission's recommendation as we are going forward with this amendment.
Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you. I remember in our discussions of tree regulations in the PLOS Committee, there was some discussion about the use of arborists versus the use of tree professionals. And the advocates were urging us not to require arborists for some part of the legislation. And I just want to confirm that the requirement for arborists to certify those arborists working for the city, that is a discrete body of work that you're referencing, not the question that came up during the tree regulation debates about the work that we would be asking tree professionals to do.
Correct. That's my read of it as well, though if I'm wrong, Ms. Ho, I'm sure will correct me.
Let me.
Please, go ahead.
So in terms, so this is specifically in terms of tree preservation plans, so asking for a certified arborist to provide that. So it's a pretty low bar from what I understood, in my research from understanding people in the field. I am happy to be corrected on that if that might be too high a bar, but I think it's not unreasonable to have, to know that, for the city to know that the person submitting the plan for the tree preservation specifically is someone who is knowledgeable in the tree professional care work.
Yeah, that is a, I think, a distinct function from what we were discussing in committee, needed to be only provided by tree professionals. So thank you. I'd like to sponsor this.
And my expectation is that when we've got that tree legislation back in front of us, we'll continue that discussion about the certification nature of tree professionals and whether or not they're going to be required to be arborists or just have gone through a city certification process. So that, more to come on that. So that's a cosponsor from Councilmember Herbold. Yes, please, Councilmember Gonzalez.
I, I just want to confirm that the, the tree professional certified person, you guys used a lot of different terminology. We're not talking about city employees. So these are not city arborists.
These are external contractors.
Okay. And, and how, how does this policy proposal or amendment impact? Are there any sort of crossovers into the, our labor relations as it relates to this body of work at the city? Are there any labor implications related to this amendment?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, we have other.
They're direct or indirect.
The green factor requirements in particular, specifically, I just looked at them. They do require a certified tree professional, which does, this would include someone certified by the ISA. I'm not going to try that word again. And so there are, there are multiple instances where the city has required, and the Department of Transportation also requires. So it's, it's, it's a, it's something, there is precedent in the city.
I would also note, there's a bit of a distinction here. This is a plan that the applicant needs to submit to the city. The city has to still conduct the review of that plan and those, and we have people who work in tree review. I don't know what their credentialing requirements are, but that doesn't take a body of work that the city is currently doing it and contracted out. It's the applicant's responsibility to prepare the plan, submit it to the city, and then be reviewed by the city's professionals.
And what we're asking here is that the applicants hire an arborist who is certified by the International Certification Organization for Arborists.
Right.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any implication to the body of work that is currently being done by city employees.
And I think I saw Councilmember Bagshaw raising her hand to be listed as a cosponsor. Did I have that right? Okay. So I'm going to call, oh yes, please, Councilwoman Musquita, cosponsor. Okay, so we'll call that a consensus item for the 25th. A-17?
As Councilmember Johnson mentioned earlier, mechanically designating an area with a P designation as part of the zone does not necessarily convey additional development standards and protections that apply through the land use code. There's another step that's required, and that's designating streets as principal pedestrian streets. So Amendment A-17 would add Northwest 90th Street and Mary Avenue Northwest in the Crown Hill Urban Village as principal pedestrian streets. Northwest, 15th Avenue Northwest and Northwest 85th Street are already principal pedestrian streets in Crown Hill.
Councilmember O'Brien?
The Crown Hill neighborhood's going through, currently going through neighborhood planning process, the, that will not be completed till a way, while after we're done with this process. But they recently did some work with both city staff and kind of outside, kind of urban design professionals and have identified these streets as possible or the more likely areas where they might be able to see more of a kind of neighborhood main street, if you will. And so they made that request for this. It's consistent with what I think is accurate, and so that's why I opened this board.
Councilmember Juarez?
Thank you. I would like to cosponsor this. And from those of us up in D5 that don't have sidewalks, we like to err on the side of having pedestrian-friendly, elder-friendly, child-friendly sidewalks in streets and so that people can actually use the infrastructure to get to light rail and bus stations. So I'll cosponsor this.
Any other questions? We'll call that a consensus item. A-18?
This one is similar. It's for the North Beacon Hill community. It would add 15th Avenue South as a principal pedestrian street. It's accompanied by a map amendment that we'll talk about later that adds pedestrian designations on Beacon Avenue South and 15th Avenue South.
Council President Harrell, anything to add?
Well, I'm obviously sponsoring this. This is just by way of background, and this is, I think, good policy. The Beacon Hill Merchants Association are, are strong advocates for, of course, preserving their businesses and making sure it's pedestrian-friendly and we have the, the retail fronting, if you will, on 15th and around 14th Avenue South to Stevens Street. So I think it's a good move.
Any further questions or thoughts? We'll call that a consensus item for the 25th. Let's move on to the B amendments.
Okay, B1, annual inflation adjustments to payment amounts. So this is an amendment in response to a report we, the council received from the Office of Housing that looked at different. different indices to adjust the payment amounts. So currently, the proposal was for, to use the Consumer Price Index All Items. And, but upon further study by the Office of Housing, they determined that it did not seem to actually track with the housing market as well as an alternative index, also a CPI, but it is CPI Shelter. And so based on their analysis, they thought that it tracked, they saw that it tracked more closely to the rise in average rents in Seattle over the past five to 10 years than the CPI All Items, or known as CPIU. So just to note that because CPI Shelter reflects changes in the housing market, this index, the use of this index for annual adjustments means that the percentage increase in payment amounts would likely be greatest when the housing market is strong, and that payment would increase less or not at all during market downturns. So this amendment would use increases in CPI Shelter to automatically adjust payment amounts instead of CPIU.
Questions or thoughts about that, colleagues? Councilmember Herbold.
I would like to sponsor that amendment, but, or co-sponsor that amendment, but I also want to flag my continuing interest to look at the need to, to adjust the fee in order to strike our goals to have 50% performance and 50% payment. There are good reasons for why the payment option meets the needs of the city and affordable housing, and the fact that those payment dollars can leverage the development of more affordable housing. But we've also heard from our communities that they really want to see performance in these buildings. And so I, I know that there is a point at which we are going to evaluate this program and make a determination of whether or not we're kind of hitting that 50-50 sweet spot. But I'd like to have more of a discussion about how and when we're going to do that. I believe there might be an amendment later that addresses this.
Next.
Is, oh, it's coming up next. Okay. All right. Thank you.
No, no problem. Yes, Councilmember Miskin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to co-sponsor this one, and I was remiss in not asking to co-sponsor A-18, the last one as well.
Great. So I'm going to call that a consensus item for the 25th. So let's move on to the reporting requirements. B2.
Okay, so B2 is an amendment, and we have a couple of options for this one, but it is in the MHA framework bill that was passed a couple of years ago. There, included in this legislation were some reporting requirements intended to help council make adjustments to the MHA program, including payment amounts, looking at payment amounts. And so this amendment originally had this report date of July 1, 2019, for the Director of the Seattle Department of Construction Inspections and the Director of Housing to provide counsel with an assessment of program performance, specifically in regards to payment versus performance outcomes. But given the delay in implementation, it seemed to make sense to extend this date for this report. We have a couple of options here. Option 1, sponsored by Chair Johnson, would move this date out to July 1, 2021, to allow for more data to be gathered. And option 2, Councilmember O'Brien's option would move this out to next year.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Sorry, what were the difference between the dates?
It's just one year.
One year.
It's 20, it's next year versus two years.
Yeah. So I, I think this is worthy of ongoing conversation. I think the, the desire that Councilmember Herbold touched on earlier is something that I share, of trying to figure out, understand as soon as possible how this is performing, and recognizing that as market conditions shifts, performance will also shift. And so striking that balance between how soon can we get meaningful information, and if we go too soon and we really don't have enough data to do anything, what's useful. So I'm interested in talking some more with staff and Office of Housing folks to get a sense of what that sweet spot is.
And the reason why I suggested 2021 originally was so that we had about, most developments take about a year to go through the development cycle. So I figured we adopt this thing in 2019, we have about a year development cycle permits in 2020, and then we've got some outcomes to report on in 2021. But, you know, this isn't, this doesn't seem like a big controversial thing, but I welcome thoughts or suggestions from my colleagues to point us in one way or another. Please, Councilmember Juarez.
I'm just co-sponsoring.
Okay, great. Any other thoughts, questions, Councilmember Herbold?
Well, there are two, two options.
Two options, 2020 or 2021.
I would like to co-sponsor the 2020.
Okay, so 20, we've got a 2020 co-sponsor and Councilmember Herbold. And Councilmember Juarez, did you have a preference about which of the, the years you prefer, 2020 or 20?
2021.
2021. Okay, it's a, it's a two to two at this point. Council, Councilmember Miskin, you're pulling the microphone towards yourself.
I think the earlier the better is helpful, but.
Let's, let's call this one for an individual vote, and we'll bring it back up on the 25th. You know, again, this doesn't seem like something that is going to require a lot of our time and attention, and hopefully we can work out something in the intervening few weeks. Okay, let's move on to item B3.
All right, so the proposal currently in front of council has payment amounts that are derived from the performance requirements, and those payment amounts are based upon market data that is about a year and a half or so old at this point. So cap rates and rents, capitalization rates and rents have changed since that initial proposal was developed. Amendment B3 would establish a date of this summer for updating those payment amounts, July 1, 2019 date. In the same vein as amendments B1 and B2, this would be done through an amendment to the framework ordinance, the ordinance 125108, which established the council's intent for implementing MHA.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Thank you. So this is similar to the conversation we just had about trying to get the right balancing point to encourage the right amount of performance, but also allow some flexibility and recognition that, that the money that goes to Office of Housing in lieu payments can, has more flexibility for how we deploy those dollars for different levels of affordability and different types of housing. The reality, of course, is the market is continually changing. This process has taken a little longer than we anticipated a few years ago. And so what we've seen is that some of the, some of the baseline amounts that we're charging, as Kittle mentioned, are based on some data that is starting to get a little old. I'm not proposing that we make the changes in this process, because I think it's going to take a little longer for us to do a little more analysis. But I would love to get that done as soon as possible. So the idea would be that sometime in the next few months, by July 1, to have that analysis done. And my proposal to you colleagues would be that we would act pretty swiftly to update those amounts. So they're, you know, almost immediately to bring those kind of more up to the, the latest measure of market conditions as kind of re-establishing a new baseline for going forward later this year.
Councilmember Herbold.
I'm just signaling my support.
Okay, Councilmember Juarez. Okay. Great. We'll call that a consensus position for the 25th. B4?
Yeah, one thing I just, staying on B3 for a minute, one thing I forgot to mention was that this amendment also contemplates the council looking at the boundaries between high, medium, and low areas for the purposes of MHA implementation as part of that July 1, 2019 review. Moving on to B4, this is an amendment.
Hold on, sorry. Councilmember O'Brien.
If I may speak to that, too, just remind folks that those, the, the high, medium, and low areas weren't just kind of random paint colors on the map. They're actually derived by analysis and costs of living in those, or cost of housing in certain neighborhoods, which, again, as market conditions change, will likely shift. And so similar, a similar thought process for me about, it's been a few years, so let's go ahead and update that if we have new data, and it's possible that some of the boundaries may have shifted.
Further thoughts or questions about that element? Please, Councilmember Miskin.
I may want to just follow up with the sponsor and the chair on this amendment in the interim. You know, I do have some questions and not necessarily concerns that would indicate to pull if others folks are comfortable with it, but I would just like to follow up with you on this one to make sure I understand how it fits into the broader agreement that was made initially.
So Amendment B4, this is an amendment that Councilmember Herbold is sponsoring. This would authorize off-site performance for the mandatory housing affordability residential program, the notion being that developers could partner with a nonprofit to develop some portion of the affordable housing off-site. Under the framework, off-site performance is allowed under the mandatory housing affordability commercial program, in recognition of the fact that developers of commercial properties are not necessarily in the business of building housing. This would use the same, more or less the same development standards that apply to the MHAC off-site performance and have it apply to MHAR.
Councilmember Herbold.
Sure. The only distinction I would want to underscore that is in the written version of the description is that in order for off-site performance to be permitted, there has to be a partnership with a nonprofit developer to act as a steward of those units. That's one of the reasons why off-site performance typically, we don't typically use it for MHAR because of the difficulty OH has in monitoring the affordability of those units. But in those cases where there is a nonprofit steward of those units, it seems like this would be an appropriate option, and it's a request that I'm moving forward from the Homestead Community Land Trust.
And there are a couple of points that feel like it's important to make as part of this discussion in signaling my support here. One of those is that the off-site performance is intended to be within the same area, so urban center, urban village, or within a mile of the project. And the developer choosing an off-site performance option has to provide a security equal to the in-lue payment, so that if, for some reason, the agreement that they had with a housing developer and the nonprofit community were to fall through, that we would have some security, that we would still have the same funds available to us to, to deliver the units that were promised. So I think that those are two important points, and, and put me in favor of this one. So please add me as a co-sponsor. And Councilmember Miskin as well. So, and Councilmember Gonzalez. So we'll call that a consensus item for the 25th. B5.
B5 would, this amendment would waive MHA requirements for unreinforced masonry buildings that add units in existing buildings if they retrofit the building and qualify for the 2030 district challenge pilot, which requires meeting certain energy efficiency goals and other green building standards. So what the 2030 district pilot does is it allows buildings in certain geographies that are unreinforced masonry buildings to add additional floors to the existing building if they are retrofitting the building and they're meeting this green building standard. What this amendment would do is if you are converting the existing portion of the building to residential units, right now, if you're doing a conversion to an existing structure that adds dwelling units, MHA applies. So you would have to contribute to MHA either by providing affordable units or, or paying in. What this would do is it would not apply the MHA requirements to the existing building in recognition that the costs of the green building standards, as well as the cost of doing the structural retrofit to make that building more earthquake safe, would, is a high enough bar. But you would be required to contribute to mandatory housing affordability for the additional floor area you can achieve. So any new floor area you're adding above the existing building, you'd still be required to contribute to MHA. The existing building would be exempt if you are doing all of those other, meeting all of those other requirements.
Councilmember Bagshot, anything to add?
I'd like to add my name to this. I also want to remind all of us that this unreinforced masonry has been an issue we've been working on for a number of years, and there's legislation right now that would help, something that's called the PACER Financing Project, and that stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy Resiliency Program. So there may be monies available for people who own these buildings as an incentive to restore them, and especially restore them back for affordable housing. So if you would just help me keep note of that, I just sent a note to Lily Wilson Odega, to make sure that they know it's something that's important to us as well.
And I think that was Council President asking to be listed as a co-sponsor. Any further, and Councilmember Gonzalez, any further discussions? Councilmember Miskin as a co-sponsor as well. We'll call that a consensus agenda item for the 25th. Let's move on to B6.
B6 is sponsored by Councilmember Herbold. This amendment would add a section to the council bill expressing council's intent to take steps if the imposition of requirements under MHA are determined to be unlawful to prevent the continuance of the new zoning and increased development capacity in the absence of other substantial affordable housing requirements. So this signals that if the, if the MHA, if the MHA requirements couldn't move forward, that council will take additional action to either require affordable housing in a different, using a different approach, or rethinking the upzones.
Councilmember Herbold.
Yeah, I think this just underscores the, the intent of this legislation as described on page 2 of the central staff memo. In exchange for the ability to build additional floors, floor area, or units, areas rezoned under the proposal would be required to include affordable housing units onsite or make a payment in lieu to build affordable housing units. So again, the, the reason for the increased zoning capacity is to allow us to, to extract the contribution towards affordable housing. If we cannot put the, if we cannot collect the contribution for affordable housing for some reason in the future, we really need to rethink the bargain that is implicit in this legislation.
And I think, you know, this is a similar provision that we've adopted in previous zoning changes, so I think it's consistent. Any further questions or thoughts about that, colleagues? Council President Harold is a co-sponsor. We'll call that a consensus position for the purposes of the 25th. C1.
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, Councilmember Miskin.
You know, if it's, if it's the consent of this body to include it, I'm not going to argue that it should be pulled out. I do think it does set a bad precedent, though, because we already do, as a council, have the authority to call into question something that has been deemed not legal later on. And so I just want to signal that I don't, I'm not going to pull this out, or not suggest that this get pulled out, but I don't want us to go down the route of setting this precedent.
Understood. C1.
C1. The city uses a set of criteria for determining where a zone is appropriate. Many of those criteria include discussion of transit service. This amendment uses a term frequent transit service that the council defined last year. That's approximately transit service that's 15 minutes or more in an hour.
Questions, colleagues? Consider that a consensus position. D1.
D1. So these last two are amendments to Council Bill 119443, which amends the comprehensive plan. The first one is Fremont Neighborhood Plan Policy. This policy currently refers to an area within the Wallingford Urban Village. It does so, asking for the retention of the character of that area. It's redundant to a policy in the Wallingford Neighborhood Plan that also talks about preserving the character of existing single-family areas within the Wallingford Urban Village. The proposal that was submitted by the executive for amendments, this policy would shift its focus from an area within the Wallingford Urban Village to the Fremont Urban Village. The Fremont Urban Village doesn't have any single-family zoning in it, so it, the proposed policy doesn't make, doesn't relate well to characteristics of the Fremont Urban Village. So this amendment proposes to delete the redundant Fremont policy and rely on Wallingford Neighborhood Plan policies to guide council action, or city action in the Wallingford Urban Village.
Councilmember O'Brien.
I will not profess to be an expert of the history of how this evolved, but I can imagine that there were discussions of boundaries in which what was going to be called Fremont and Wallingford. At this point in time, it seems to me that there's an interest to just kind of clarify. And I think, I'm not sure if it was a mistake, but the underlying legislation maintaining a reference to single-family areas within the Fremont when there aren't any seem to be just superfluous. So I'm proposing to eliminate that.
No further questions on that. We'll call that a consensus agenda item. How about B2, Mr. Woodson?
Oh, B2 is the Morgan Junction Neighborhood Plan Policies. So there were some revisions to the plans, the policies with Morgan Junction. And so in response to community interests, we, this is an amendment, there was, this language in the proposed amendment more reflects what the community would like to see in the comprehensive plan.
Councilmember Herbold.
Yeah, this simply establishes a trigger for neighborhood planning. Whenever 25% or more of the land within the urban village is proposed for changes, it creates a trigger for neighborhood planning process. creates a trigger for neighborhood planning process, or some sort of community planning process, whatever we're calling it at the time.
Any further questions or thoughts about that one, folks? We'll call that a consensus agenda item. Anything you'd like to add, Ms. Panucci, before we move on to the map-related amendments about other technical amendments that may come forward between now and the 25th?
No, just that, I guess, at the meeting on the 25th, there will be some cleanup amendment that will be included as part of the consent package.
And as a reminder for my colleagues, the way that we're going to plan to handle that consent package is to basically walk the council through that consent package at the beginning of the deliberations, and allow any individual member, for any reason, to pull any item from that consent package for individual discussion and vote. So just because it's a consent item today doesn't mean that you don't have the opportunity to pull it out for an individual vote on the 25th. You'll still have that opportunity if something has happened in the intervening few weeks. We are going to transition now to the map amendments, and we're going to go through in order by district with the same process as before. I think we'll have central staffers walk people through the proposed change, ask the sponsor if they'd like to add anything, ask individual council members if they have any questions, ask for any additional cosponsors, and then use that to determine whether or not these map amendments become part of a consent package, or whether we pull those map amendments out for individual votes. So same process going forward. We've got about 60 of these, so we, you know, we're running pretty fast a pace, but I would encourage us to try to be focused in our discussions, because I know many folks have lunchtime events that they need to try to attend. Ms. Panucci, any opening remarks on the map amendments for orientation to folks?
No, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague. We'll do just a quick description of how to read the map amendment pages, and then we will jump into describing the amendments.
Mr. McConaughey.
Yep, so I'm still Eric McConaughey, and I still work for you, and I'll run through what this page looks like. So each of the pages is formatted really more or less the same way, same colors, same styles of lines on the map, some things that might be helpful. The current zoning is shown as you see here in the upper left of that map frame in that sort of font and style. The MHA proposed designation, that is to say, the proposal that's in the bill that was sent to us by the executive, is underlined. The amendment number is in that sort of oval. In this case, it's 1-1. Streets are shown, that's sort of self-explanatory. You can see the sort of thin outlines of individual parcels, where there's sort of spaces between parcels, just for folks who might not be familiar with looking at maps of this type. That's generally the right way, where you'd find roads, and you can see, in this case, Southwest Carroll Street, for example, is shown in that sort of brownish-orange area, it's right in the middle of the road. And then if we turn to our attention outside of the map frame, and each of the maps in the same places, the same sort of real estate of the page, you'll see the address just below the map frame, a reiteration of the amendment number. You'll see the current zoning is sort of from, that is what's on the ground right now. Then you'll see what's proposed in the bill, 119444, that zoning that's above the line. And then below the line to the right, you'll see the amendment. That's the amendment that's represented on this page. There's a description, in this case, do not apply MHA, et cetera. So that's just a quick sentence or so to give a little more meaning to it. And then finally, just wanted to touch on, some of these comprehensive, excuse me, some of these amendments to zoning would require a corresponding comprehensive plan amendment, and that's noted either as no or yes, they're at the bottom of the page. This is just meant to be helpful, because we'll see lots of pages like this as we go forward, and hopefully it'll help folks who are reviewing this video later or watching right now live, sort of keep up with what's happening.
Colleagues, questions about the map or legend as Erica's walked us through it? Okay, let's move to Amendment 1-1. We'll start in Councilmember Herbold's district.
So this is, yes. Amendment 1-1 is, so the existing zoning is LR3RC, and was proposed to just get the M bump, but the request is for there to be no rezone, so do not apply MHA to this site.
Councilmember Herbold.
This is an unusual situation in that the only reason that we are requesting this amendment is because this is a very small area that's currently zoned LR3, surrounded by LR2, LR1, and LR2 zones. And so the way that the community has proposed to have the height consistent with the rest of the surrounding areas is to not propose the M bump. This is the current location of La Rustica, and this is a request from, from the surrounding community.
Questions about this one, colleagues? I'm going to express reservations on this, Councilmember Herbold. As you know, we've tried really hard to ensure that MHA is applied in all the places where it is applied. I think we will get to a point later on where I might argue against my own position right there. So I would, at this point, signal that I'm not supportive of this amendment, but I'm not going to stand in the way of it being included in the consent package because of the small nature of this and the fact that I will be making an intellectually disident argument about this later. Yes, please, Councilmember O'Brien.
I'm mostly excited to hear about your intellectually disident argument coming up. Just trying to anticipate when that will happen, so I'll be paying attention. So question, would this amendment then leave an LR3 without the, that would be the, at this point, the only place in the city where that would exist?
There would be other places, too. So MHA is not being implemented in major institution overlays. The underlying zoning within those overlays include LR3-zoned areas, as well as other areas with the current zoning.
In addition, most historic districts have been excluded from the MHA proposal.
So there, in some of those historic districts, there's some low-rise zoning.
Okay. Thank you. B2. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a general comment, and I apologize to the good council member from District 1, because this does not apply just to your district. This is a comment that I'd like to make for the various map amendments. I'm going to be concerned with amendments that do indicate that we're going to downzone or not fully upzone under the existing EIS. I think that in every opportunity that we have to expand housing to opportunity-rich, thriving urban villages, I would like to see us take advantage of that. And I do have reserves about reducing the capacity to increase our ability to serve folks exactly in the type of places that we're looking at, that are in urban villages, in transit-rich areas, that could offer more affordable housing to various areas of the city. So just on a principled stance, I just want to signal to my colleagues, as a citywide council member, I feel it's my duty to look at this entire package as a whole. I understand completely that we have districts that have specific concerns, and I appreciate that. I want to make sure, though, that we're looking at how we can continue to expand access to affordable housing, housing in general, especially in our thriving urban villages. And of the 50 or so map amendments, about 35 of them appear to reduce the proposed zoning changes. So I'm going to express concerns about those as we go through, because it's not just about the units and the numbers, though I'm very interested, as we go through, if we have examples of the number of houses or a number of units that we would not have if we were going to go with specific amendments, because I think that translates to number of people as well that would not be living in those areas. So I appreciate that many people have had tough discussions within their district, they know their members and districts well. We've been out in district as well, and we've actually tried to push the limits on what we could do within the existing EIS. Unfortunately, we're, we are constrained with what we currently have, so I am going to express concerns as we go through with, if we're going to be scaling down what we could be doing under the EIS.
Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you. I want to echo Councilmember Musqueta's concerns. I wholeheartedly agree with the intent of Hala and MHA. And I know that there are some areas across the city, and again, I understand Councilmember Herbold represents District 1, and I represent District 5, but I look at these issues in the density and how we look and how we grow our city, that we certainly look at it through a displacement lens. We certainly look at it through the heat map of high displacement and low opportunity that has not, and every neighborhood is different. But I'm hoping that in these discussions, that we don't just find ourselves carving out places where people politically think it's not viable to make change. And that's what I'm concerned about for this city, because I think we understand how this city was deliberately redlined and constructed to keep particular people in neighborhoods out of particular areas. And I'm hoping that we can right a historical wrong, and that we can be a city that can do that. So I will leave it at that. Thank you.
We've got Councilmember Gonzalez next, Councilmember O'Brien, and then Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. So I also have reservations about, about the suite of District 1-proposed amendments. At this point, I don't think I can support many, if any, of these. Five of the 11 amendments that are being proposed for District 1 are actually in my neighborhood, because I live in the West Seattle Junction Urban Village. And so I just continue to have concerns about not being willing to advance a full density in a space like West Seattle Junction Urban Village, for example, which is a high-opportunity area and low-risk-of-displacement area. And, and I think that it's really important for us to take a strong stance in those particular contexts to ensure that we are allowing space for others who have not had historical access to those types of neighborhoods to be able to become my neighbors. And I feel like that's a really important value and concept here, and I appreciate Councilmember Herbold's desire to want to go a little slower in terms of the proposed residential small lot approach. But I think that, that where I have the difficulty is that we end up asking for less affordable housing in order to get those residential small lots. And I feel a sense of urgency around getting as much as we can from these upzones, and I think that the LR1, LR2s accomplish that at the higher M rate.
Councilmember O'Brien.
I concur with my, with the last three colleagues' mindset, so just if you're counting noses.
Councilmember Herbold, I imagine that many of those same concerns are going to be leveled against me in just a few minutes when we get to District 4, so I don't want you to feel picked on.
We're going to be intellectually consistent.
Well, well done, Councilmember Gonzalez, but please, Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. So we haven't yet moved into the set of amendments that I think folks have jumped towards talking about, the Junction amendments. So I'm going to hold my comments specifically about the Junction, but I just want to speak sort of generally about how much I appreciate the folks in the city, and in particularly in my district, who are embracing RSL. That is a huge jump from where we were just six months ago. And I think we are underestimating the, how big of a culture shift that is, and how, how bold our action is that we are contemplating taking today, and how if RSL is done well and succeeds in urban villages, we can productively, in collaboration with communities who are in single-family outside of urban villages, promote a continued discussion and implementation of RSL in other places. And I think it's incredibly important, not just, it's not just about going slow for growth, it's about bringing people into this conversation about this culture shift, and about the fact that, you know, again, we have communities of people who completely opposed any changes to single-family, who are now embracing the RSL model. And I don't, I don't want to sell that accomplishment short, and I think it is a down payment towards leveraging more productive conversations around single-family outside of, outside of urban villages. I also want to distribute just a visual illustration of how, how RSL will transform single-family neighborhoods in a way that I really, I believe is significant. So I want to, I do want to speak specifically to the Junction amendments after they're described, but that's just sort of in general my position on the framework and positive progress that we're making with, with this new RSL model.
Any other comments? Please, Councilmember Gonzalez.
I, I trust that we're going to be able to have an opportunity to discuss this more in the future, and maybe even shortly. But I just, I just want to, I just want to say that I, I don't want my comments to be construed as a sort of, you know, rejection of some of the goodwill that you have described, Councilmember Herbold. But I do, I do think that this is, this is a moment in time, and this is a very unique opportunity for this city to be bold in terms of its efforts and vision around increasing density in urban villages. And, and this is, I think, that moment in time. And I feel as though we don't have the luxury of time to continue to wait to, to bring folks along, and we have been having this discussion for years in this city with lots of outreach, lots of engagement. I think Ms. Sarah Maxana probably has more gray hair now than she did when she started this process. Thank you. I certainly do. And, and I just, I just really feel like this is a, this is the moment of time for us to move this important policy forward in a way that is bold, that is visionary, and that accomplishes the ultimate goal of building more affordable housing. That, that is the goal. For me, that's the North Star, is how are we going to ensure that as we develop density, it meets character of neighborhood? But that doesn't necessarily mean that the, the answer to, to the question, so for example, I guess what I have difficulty with is sort of the construct that, that the answer to making sure that neighborhoods are livable is just to leave them the same way. And so I agree, but I think that, that RSL is, in my mind, doesn't go far enough to be able to meet the challenges that we are having with affordable housing. The reality is, we need more units to be built at an affordable rate to allow more people to live in these neighborhoods. And so I feel really strongly that, that this is that moment in time, and this is our opportunity to take that bold action to advance this.
I think it's fair to say that reasonable minds can come to slightly different conclusions on this, and we all want to be informed by data. At the conclusion of these map presentations, you'll hear a little bit from central staff about the analysis that they will do about the impact related to the totality of the amendments, which I assume is going to be important factors, particularly for our citywide council members, to understand the totality of the proposals that are being made. But I appreciate all the thoughtful comments and recognition that three years' worth of meetings, 40-some of which were led by the city council, several hundred led by community members, and OPCD has resulted in a set of changes that are getting us pretty close to the finish line, and that is a testament to, I think, the perseverance of not only us, but also many folks out in communities. So we're getting there. And if there's nothing further.
Process question.
Process question, please, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You mentioned at the end, we'll talk a little bit more about the type of data and impact analysis that's being complete. Is it fair to say, as we go district by district, we don't yet have a full assessment of the number of housing units or houses that would be reduced from the various proposals? So we don't have a net impact of each district as we go through the proposals, do we?
That is correct. Between, we were waiting for, to get the set of amendments that were sponsored, and then we will be looking at the, the potential impacts of the amendments taken as a whole would have on the overall housing productions, and we will be able to do some analysis of breaking that down by district or urban village. But the more that breaks down, the less precise it becomes.
Okay, that's helpful, Mr. Chair, and I think that, that just goes further to underscore the point that I started with, which is, you know, perhaps this is worth a policy discussion, and perhaps it's worth weighing various considerations. I think that we're also trying to make up for decades of lost time and then doing historic wrongs, as Councilmember Juarez mentioned. So to underscore the point made earlier, especially because we don't yet have that data, and that's not on you, we were working as fast as we could to get all these amendments together, but I think we really, it is imperative on us to know the implications for the various amendments, especially if it's going to result in reduced homes.
I could just add, what we do have is analysis that the executive did, based on a request from council previously, from a select committee meeting last spring, I believe. There was a request to look at what if the proposal was modified to only apply M-level bumps everywhere in the city, so no M1 or M2 bumps anywhere, as well as looking at what if only M-level bumps were applied in single-family zones, which means that all single-family zones within the study area would just go to RSL. So we do have that overall, that analysis, and I have broken that down by urban village that I can distribute after, after this meeting. But that doesn't, that is not a one-for-one comparison to the package of amendments that are actually presented here today.
That's the information I provided last night, Councilmember Musqueta. And as Ally is saying, for the Junction, which we are about to talk about, the number for all of the single-family to go to RSL for all of the single-family to go to RSL was 37 units. And as you will see when we go into it, this, the amendments proposed do not convert all single-family to RSL. Some of the single-family is maintained at what was originally proposed. So it'll be a slightly lower number than the 37 units.
So that was Map 1-1 of about 60 minutes. So let's see if we can move a little more quickly through the next 59 or so. Map 1-2?
Yes, so Maps 1-2 through 1-6 are the single-family zones within the West Seattle Junction. So the request was for, we understood for all the single-family areas within the West Seattle Junction to be, because the MHA proposal was for those to go to either LR1 or LR2, which would have been a M1 or M2 bump down to RSL to just the M bump.
Councilmember Herbold.
And for my, my review of the map of the entire area zoomed in, it's, I don't think it's for all of the single-family areas. There are some single-family areas that there's no amendment proposed within the urban village.
We can provide that information following committee will confirm that there are some areas currently zoned single-family that are not proposed to be modified by these amendments.
Thank you. And so as it relates specifically to these amendments, we know that Sound Transit 3 has identified the West Seattle Junction as the location of future light rail station. The specifics of the station and specific alignment and the necessary property acquisitions has not yet been decided. The community has expressed strong support for additional zoning changes in order to accommodate transit-oriented development in the Junction once an alignment and station location has been identified. OPCD has committed to the Junction and to me, and actually to the council, in a report responding to a statement of legislative intent related to neighborhood planning priorities, that they are going to begin a neighborhood planning process to identify areas for additional zoning capacity. They will begin in earnest next year. They're going to start having discussions this year, though. An additional concern is that upzoning properties that are likely needed for light rail, either for staging or for acquisition, because the properties are in the footprint of the alignment, will potentially increase the cost of Sound Transit 3 because they will, they are under an obligation to provide the, when doing condemnations of properties, they have to pay the property owner for the highest and best use of the property. And that is going to be a very different sum of dollars between RSL and a low-rise one or two. And then lastly, as, as we mentioned before, the central staff has identified, working with OPCD, that the change in the current single-family areas changing it all to RSL instead of something higher would be a potential affordable unit count of 37 units. And again, I believe we can more than make up for that in stationary area planning that the community will be getting next year.
Further thoughts or questions? Please, Councilmember O'Brien.
One broad comment, reflection on what you said, Councilmember Herbold. I appreciate the sensitivity to Sound Transit 3 costs and expansion. I think it's important that when we look at, look at these changes, yes, there is additional development capacity, which would likely increase the value. There's also a requirement, in some cases where we're looking at an M2 bump, a significant requirement that these properties, if they're redeveloped, have to contribute to affordable housing. And so, you know, I don't want to pretend that we're going to get the formula precise, but the, the assumption is that they're going to be fairly close to offsetting. So I don't know that, I don't know that I accept that, saying that instead of a, you know, a single-family zone, you're going to LR2, but you're now going to have to pay, I don't know what this zone is, but 20 bucks a square foot for affordable housing in Luffy. Those may about offset, so it may not increase the value. I want to speak just for a second, as we get into the suite of these things, if we make it through to Amendment 60 or so, when we get down into my district, there's a number of areas where I will also be proposing scaling back some of the upzone from, that's currently a single-family, proposed to go to low-rise, back to residential small lot. And I just want to speak to three really important principles that are guiding me in these decisions, that I think are consistent in the framework as, as we've been discussing for a long time. One is that all multifamily and commercial property in the city that's getting redeveloped will contribute to affordable housing. And, and this, the proposals here, your amendments do that for sure, Councilmember Herbold. Another one is that urban villages are drawn in a way that they represent appropriate walkshed for frequent, reliable transit, so that these are the areas where we're saying we're well-served by transit and we want to see, we want to see anyone who's in a walkshed of these areas to be in an urban village. And so, again, you're not proposing changing that. So consistent with that one, too. And the third one is that within, within our urban villages, that something more dense than what's currently the single-family zone and not changing that. So it meets my three main requirements. There are a couple of areas where I have some concerns, and I've tried to be sensitive to this in Crown Hill, which is the area where, which is about transition zones. Trying to, in my proposal, where we've shifted from single, from low-rise back to residential small lot, to leave buffers between neighborhood commercial and residential small lot of some low-rise. And I look at some of the maps on here, Councilmember Herbold, like for instance, 1-5, I can see that along the, I presume that's the north side, there's a proposal to leave, you know, a couple lots of low-rise 2 as a buffer between the neighborhood commercial. But I noticed on the west side of 42nd Avenue, there's a proposal to go to RSL adjacent to neighborhood commercial 75 feet. And I think, again, it's, it's pretty challenging to draw these maps perfectly because the city's not laid out perfectly and there's going to be overlaps. But I do have some concerns about the, the transition zones. And I think, I'm not proposing anything changing at the moment, but I guess I would speak to being more supportive if there were some low-rise buffer between neighborhood commercial and residential small lot.
So what I'm hearing out of that conversation, which I hope will inform further discussions, is that when central staffers walk through a suite of amendments that relate to one particular urban village, if there is a proposal, as you outlined, Councilmember O'Brien, 1-5, that you might want to see further analysis done on, that we could pull out that individual proposal. However, in the course of that discussion, you did not ask for that. So my recommendation moving forward is unless there's objection, we'll call the West Seattle Junction amendments part of the consent package. And if individual members would like to pull out individual parts to discuss on the 25th, they can do so. But please, Councilmember Herbold.
Yeah, I would just like to signal my interest in talking more with Councilmember O'Brien about Amendment 5, to see if we could address some of those, those buffer concerns, which I think are valid.
And just, 1-5 was the example in front of me. There's, there's a number of them that have kind of similar things. And I'll defer to other colleagues to see how strongly folks feel in this conversation.
Councilmember Muscata.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. President.
Oh, no.
Sorry about that, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate in the entirety of the work that you've put into this process. And we are almost at the finish line. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel. MHA month is February, and we are here. By the end of this month, we will have the opportunity to tell working families across Seattle that there is the opportunity to live in denser, transit-accessible, rich neighborhoods of the community, that we've been really trying to figure out ways to create more inclusivity over the last three-plus-10 years. I appreciate that we want to get through this relatively quickly. I am going to express my concern with having items 1 through 2, or amendments 1-2 through 1-6 included in the consent package, though. I think that there has been a good point raised about the consideration of light rail underway and the ways in which the area could be changing when the West Seattle Station opens in 2030. But I think in the meantime, the West Seattle Junction is an area that is growing, and many people are interested in living there. I myself am interested in living in your district and very interested in seeing how we can expedite some of the zoning that's being proposed now within the existing EIS so that we can grow the number of individuals that can live in that area near these rapid bus lines. And also recognize that this is a very dense area for renters to live in, and renters in particular need to continue to have affordable housing options. So I think it's worthy of additional conversation. You know, obviously, we're not voting today, but I think it's worthy of additional conversation and would like to pull those.
So then I will ask then for central staff to mark the Junction Urban Village amendments for individual votes for the 25th, unless, of course, in the intervening few weeks, as was suggested, Councilmember Herbold could meet with her colleagues and come to some consensus position, at which point then we'd present those as part of a consensus package and allow people to, to understand what that looks like when we're back again on the 25th. So let's move on to Item 1-8, please.
Yes, so 1-8 is the area west of Font Leroy, south of Southwest Graham Street. This proposal is to reduce the proposed zone designation in the Morgan Junction Urban Village, south of South Graham Street and northwest of Font Leroy Way Southwest, to a less intense, low-rise, multifamily zone designation. So it is currently zoned single-family 5,000, and is proposed to, in the council bill, to be LR3M2, and the amendment would be LR2M1.
Councilmember Herbold.
Nothing to add.
I'm not seeing any questions about that, so I'm going to call that part of the consent discussions. No? Okay, okay, never mind. 1-10?
1-10 is, so this is located, the area bounded by Southwest Barton, Barton Place Southwest and 21st Avenue South-South. The proposal is to reduce the proposed zone designation in the Morgan Junction Urban Village. Oh, wait, this is Highland Park.
Yeah, Highland Park.
Oh, wait, something's wrong. Am I looking at the wrong one? Oh, sorry, we have a description error. This is Highland Park in the Highland Park neighborhood. And the proposal is to, it's currently a single-family 7,200, and the proposal is to go for LR1M1, and the amendment is for it to go to RSLM.
Councilmember Herbold.
Nothing to add.
Any colleagues that would like to pull this out for an individual discussion?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Muscata?
Yes, please. Do you want me to speak to that?
No, if you're just asking for an individual vote on that, then we can just register it that way.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that relates to Morgan Junction and the West Highland Park, just really because of the proximity to light rail.
Good. 1-11?
Oh, okay, yeah, got you. Okay. 1-11 and 1-12 are, wait, no, wait, hold on, I think I'm looking at the wrong one. 1-11 is to reduce the proposed zone designation within the Westwood Highland Park Urban Village along 26th Avenue Southwest, from low-rise multifamily to residential small lot. Current zoning is single-family 5,000 or a single-family 7,200. The proposal in the council bill was for it to be LR1M1.
Councilmember Herbold.
Nothing to add. I just, at some point, probably after this meeting, would like the opportunity to demonstrate visually how small the areas of these changes are within the larger urban villages. I don't feel like these maps do justice to the fact that these are very small areas within larger areas that, that have, that, that there are no amendments to, to tweak the zoning. So I, I've actually, I produced that, I didn't, I didn't bring it along with me, so at some point, I'll share that.
I would just, Eric just put up on the screen the district-level map. This doesn't do it perfectly, but it sort of is a, is a key map that sort of shows the areas. Anything that is white is outside of the study area, so it's sort of showing in the district the areas that are subject to amendments and areas that are not subject to amendments.
Please, Councilmember Muscata.
Thank you very much. I'm wondering if the sponsor of the last two here, on 1-12 and 1-13, could you help me understand a little bit more of what the change would mean?
Hold on, we haven't gotten to those yet.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We're still, we're still on 1-11. Any further discussion about 1-11? I'm not seeing any requests to pull 1-11 out for an individual vote. So we'll consider that to be part of the consent package. So 1-12 and 1-13.
Yes, so 1-12 and 1-13 are in the Morgan Junction Urban Village, and their request has been to...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. My comment before was related to both the Westwood Highland Park and the Morgan Junction.
Okay.
I'm just trying to be consistent.
I appreciate that.
Okay. What did we say, Councilmember Gonzalez? Intellectual consistency?
Remaining intellectually consistent, yes.
Shall we proceed? Okay, please, Ms. Hope.
Okay, so 1-12 and 1-13 are requests to remove the P designation, zone designation in the Morgan Junction Urban Village. So currently, the zoning in 1-12 is NC330. Council bill would make that NC3P55 with M bump. Amendment would be to NC355. And similarly, 1-13 is NC230. Council bill would have it go to NC2P40, and amendment is for it to go to NC240.
So the removal of the pedestrian designations, Councilmember Herbold.
Yes, removal of the pedestrian designation for now. This is something that folks from Morgan came and spoke to us in a previous meeting about. They are interested in pursuing a pedestrian designation, and that is signaled in the resolution that we're developing. But we, they just feel like we're getting the cart before the horse a little bit.
And in the meantime, the biggest differentiator here would be that buildings could be built without required commercial spaces on the ground floor, which could result in more housing in this neighborhood. So, I mean, I think that the net effect here is positive for us, but I'm looking around to see if there's any. The net effect of the amendment could result in more housing, at least in the interim condition. If we were to apply a pedestrian designation, development in this neighborhood would be required to do ground-floor commercial space. If we remove the pedestrian designation, you're allowed to put in ground-floor apartments, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm looking at central staff. Oh, yeah, I'm getting some nods. Okay, I'm, I know, kind of what I'm doing. Okay, good. Yes, please, Councilmember O'Brien, save me.
One of the, one of the other distinctions, I believe, would be where driveways and stuff would be located. And so, which I have some concerns about, but I totally respect that the neighborhood's going through a process to, to do that, and I support Councilmember Herbold's amendments.
So, so I'm calling this one a set of consensus discussions. I believe that concludes District 1. Councilmember Herbold, any final thoughts? Let's move on to the council president's district.
2-1A, 2-1B, and 2-1C are all related to an area that is within the new Mount Baker Park Historic District. This district was designated at the federal level last year, and so it was not considered as part of the Executive's original proposal. 2-1A and 2-1B are both areas that are currently within the North Rainier Urban Village. 2-1C are the portions of the Historic District that were proposed to be added to the North Rainier Historic, or North Rainier Urban Village. These amendments would remove areas 2-1C from the proposed expansion area and would maintain the current zoning on 2-1A and 2-1B.
Council president.
Just briefly, and I sort of described this during the first round, that the designation as a Historic District was a result of a lot of community work, a lot of community advocacy. And this is one of the most diverse areas in the city, with Franklin High School being right there, and a lot of good small businesses and a strong community. And so sort of carving this out because of its Historic District status and the efforts is just consistent with what we're trying to do in that area. It's been sort of a, sort of a funky traffic design area for a long time with some anomalies. And I think, again, we are on the cusp of doing some great things in that area around the light rail, and the Historic District work is very complimentary. So, again, the community's arguing strongly for this, and I strongly support it.
Any questions, colleagues? Councilmember O'Brien.
I didn't quite track the description, but are all these areas within the Historic?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussions on this topic? Please, Councilmember Miskita.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thanks to the council president for bringing this forward. I think as I look at 1 through, 1A, B, and C, I'm cognizant of the fact that we have other complications as well that we're trying to address in this package as a whole. I remain concerned, because these are areas near Franklin High School, near the Transit Center, and I think our goal is to make sure that more residents have access to this transit-like facilities and that we have the opportunity to have people stay in place as well as bring more folks in. I just want to register my concerns. If it's the will of this body to keep it in, given the ongoing conversations we're having about moving forward, I understand that.
I'm hearing your concerns is registered, so we'll call those three for individual votes when we get together on the 25th.
Well, let me be clear, and I appreciate those concerns, that this work, and I figured there'd be some concerns like that. At some point, I think we have to recognize we are now by districts. And at some point, it's incumbent upon that elected representative to understand the policy concerns of where we're trying to go with affordability, but listen to the students at Franklin, listen to the small African-American and Asian and Latino and minority businesses in the community, listen to people that have been in that community for 30, 40, 50 years. My parents lived there for 40 years. And these amendments are a result of, again, a lot of advocacy for what they're trying to preserve in this area. And this is just one small part of District 2, by the way. So I hope that you have an appreciation, Ms. at-large, for the water that many of us are asked to carry, and that's why I was a little silent on Councilmember Herbold. She was the guinea pig, I sort of wanted to see how that went. But again, you know, this is the push and pull that we're up against. But I actually think that playing into the Historic District, and there's some other activities that are occurring, will get us more resources to, particularly for small businesses. And I've said this all along, and I've been somewhat silent, because I, again, you know, we're not voting today, that what we're fighting, the economic forces of displacement, are quite huge. And as we continue to fight it, and as councils after this continue to fight it, and executives continue to fight it, preserving other institutions such as small businesses and churches and small stores, I think, becomes critical, because a lot of these tangible assets still help preserve community. And even if people unfortunate on fixed income may have to flee to, I'll say Auburn, I always pick on Auburn, I'm hopeful that we can still have as much, as many tangible assets here as possible, in addition to housing. So when I look at what we're trying to do in this area, I think that, at least from my policy preference, works toward that end. So I get your concerns, and I hope you understand mine.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah, I think much of what I was going to say has been said, but I was, I also understand Council President Harrell's motivation for advancing these three amendments in the context, in the very limited context of historic resource districts. That being said, I'd be remiss in failing to express my disappointment that Mount Baker won't be, that this part of Mount Baker won't be seeing additional affordable housing being developed within the particular neighborhood, and that is an unfortunate situation for us to be in. But I understand the motivation, both as stated by Council President Harrell and as I understand it based on other conversations with other departments within our cities. So I appreciate the role that you play, Council President Harrell, in representing your district, and hope that we, at-large, council members can continue to sort of carry the water and hold the weight of making sure that there is affordable housing available in all parts of our city, because we are dealing with citywide mandatory housing affordability. And I think Councilmember Miskita and I are going to continue to hold that role on this dais and take it very seriously as well.
So there was an individual member who asked for an individual vote on this, so we'll ask for those individual votes to come forward on the 25th on 2-1A, 2-1B, and 2-1C.
So no one asked for individual votes, why are you doing that?
I believe that that was the position expressed by your Councilmember Miskita.
Census.
I appreciate you clarifying that, and I think that Councilmember Gonzalez articulated it. It's just a sense of disappointment, it's also a recognition of the realities that we're currently facing, given that we have historic district preservation that we need to keep in mind as well. I understand that and appreciate the concerns that we are all facing, but it is wanting to ensure that we do have the opportunity to have a chance to have a conversation in the meantime, and if there is a need to pull it out on the 25th, we still have that option, correct?
Correct. Council President, I apologize.
No problem. I'd like to remind my colleagues, we still have 3, 4, 5, and 6 to come up, and 7.
7 is good.
So I have a long memory.
2-3, I believe.
2-3 adds a pedestrian designation in commercial areas along 15th Avenue South and Beacon Avenue South in the North Beacon Hill Urban Village.
Anything to add, Council President?
No, nothing to add.
Any questions about this one, colleagues? Consider that to be part of the consensus package, despite your sneezing objection, Councilmember O'Brien. 2-4, please.
2-4 reduces the proposed height in an area south of the intersection of Martin Luther King Way and Rainier Beach Avenue South, from 95 feet to 55 feet.
Council President?
Again, this is commercial, and again, for a variety of reasons, both coming from small business owners and labor and other types of folks, that there's just a strong push to have this commercial zone still, I'll just say lower heights. And again, I understand the policy arguments where one could say, well, you want to increase this commercial zone, but again, as I said about my spiel on small businesses, this becomes critical for, I think, the preservation of our community.
And I would concur. One of those instances where, again, to Councilmember O'Brien's question earlier about adjacency, when you look at the map on this one individually, it does create a better adjacency for maybe the surrounding low-rise zoned areas. Please, Councilmember Miskita.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and maybe a question for you or the staff or the sponsor. I see that it is proposing to reduce the zoning, but the question that I would have within the existing framework that's still allowed under this proposal, would it actually allow for us to have a more affordable construction option, even if it's slightly lower? I'm wondering if it would be a more affordable construction option, especially given that it's a commercial.
Generally, so at 95 feet, our zoning doesn't allow wood frame construction, but you can always build to 75 feet in that zone, which would be a wood frame over a concrete building. So it's probably a wash.
Okay, and this is just commercial again, Mr. Chair, Mr. Staff?
Yes, it's, in the legislation, it's proposed to go to a CRL mix zone, which allows commercial uses. Under the amendment, it would go to a neighborhood commercial zone, which also allows commercial uses. Both zones allow residential as well, so it's not purely commercial.
Am I losing residential possibilities by keeping it lower?
This would reduce a couple of floors of residential use.
So let me talk offline a little bit more about you, because that wasn't my assumption. So we'll, let's hold off on this until I have further discussion.
So we're going to call for an individual vote on 2-4.
2-9 is an increase in the area around Othello Park. Most of that area on the map is the park itself. This would increase the zoning on the east and south of the park, from residential small lot to low-rise one.
Council President?
Yeah, being the urbanist and the density advocate that I am, I thought this would be very appropriate to amend this legislation, so it speaks for itself.
Any further thoughts?
I like this one, Council President.
Okay.
We'll include that as part of the consensus package. I believe that concludes District 2. As a preamble for District 3, Councilmember Sawant is unable to join us this morning. She's regrettably homesick. I want to acknowledge that in her proposal, we are seeing a series of proposed amendments that will, I think, be looked upon favorably by our citywide council members, because in each instance, it takes the executive's proposal and proposes to increase the zoning capacity. And I also want to recognize that it's one of the few places where the executive's analysis did allow for that kind of choice. I think many of us were frustrated by the lack of flexibility that we were given as part of the environmental analysis about places where we might like to see the zoning heights go a little bit higher in places where that might be more appropriate, but where that was not studied. In Capitol Hill, this has not proven to be the case. So with that preamble, why don't we walk through the four District 3 amendments? Mr. McConaughey?
Thank you for that. So this is 314. This is areas east of Martin Luther King Junior Way and South Jackson Street. It would go from single-family 5,000, under the amendment to the bill, to LR1, instead of to RSLM as proposed in the bill.
Any questions about this, colleagues? We'll consider that to be part of the consent package. 315, Mr. McConaughey?
315, this is located at 1722, excuse me, 22nd Avenue South. This would go from LR2, under the amendment to the bill, to mid-rise M2. Under the bill as proposed by the executive, it was to LR3M1.
Questions about this, colleagues?
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to keep, is this 315 we're talking about now?
Correct. Yeah, I'm happy to reiterate any of that. Yeah, this is 315.
This, help me understand, is this like one block or something, or what's going on here?
This is just a...
And who's proposing this amendment?
This comes from individual sort of parties that are interested in having this happen. The idea was to, I think probably two, an amendment in each of these, the idea was to go to higher zones that couldn't necessarily be achieved by, that weren't proposed in the preferred alternative but were supported by the elder alternatives. And so this would bump this from LR3M1 to mid-rise, a more capacity, to an M2 bump.
So let me put this in layperson's terms. This is asked by a private developer to just go up, and how does that fit into the adjacent properties? Is it just a carve-out, or, and who's there now and who's being displaced?
I can't answer that last question about who's there now and who's being displaced right here at the table, but I could look into that for you if you'd like. This, in at least, in layperson's terms, and I believe this is why it was considered in one of the alternatives, you can see to the north and west, there is proposed, under the bill, a mid-rise bump to M2. And so should this amendment go through, it would add another piece of mid-rise to the zoning on the ground there, and would sort of step from the low-rise 3 up to that NC or neighborhood commercial 3.
Council President Harrell, I might be mistaken about this, but I think this is a site that the council has considered in a different context before. I think last fall, the council passed an ordinance designating some portion of this area for remediation, as eligible for remediation funds under a Department of Ecology program. So this might be part of the site that I think is controlled at least partially by Lake Union Partners and Mount Baker Housing that is slated for future development.
Just noted as the Grand Street Commons project.
Thanks to Councilmember Gonzalez's technological skills, I'm looking at it right now. So, okay, my questions are answered.
So seeing no objection, we'll consider that to be part of the consent agenda. Please, Councilmember O'Brien?
I just wanted to add additional context for my colleagues and for the public. So I was a little concerned, because it's just a specific address, and I wasn't sure what that was about, but I appreciate the additional information to jog our collective memories around the connection to the vision around creating a massive amount and footprint of affordable housing with commercial space, et cetera, with Mount Baker Housing, I believe it is, the nonprofit developer, and South Lake Union Partners. And so currently, just so folks know, if you go onto Google Maps and look at the satellite images and zoom in, it's actually an empty lot with some abandoned buildings on it. So I see this as a good move forward in terms of reimagining and repurposing this part of the city to facilitate Mount Baker Housing's ability to advance their project.
So with those comments, we'll consider this to be part of the consent package. 316, Mr. McConaughey?
The current zoning at this site is a single-family 5,000, as proposed as part of the bill. It would go to RSL with an M bump. The amendment would go to low-rise 2 with an M1 bump. This is located at the northwest corner of 20th Avenue South and South Holgate.
Questions about this, colleagues? Seeing none, we'll consider that to be part of the consent. And 317, please.
And 317 would go from a single-family 5,000 in the bill, as proposed with the executive, to RSLM. The amendment would take it to LR2M1.
Questions about this one, colleagues? Similarly, I think, considering the fact that this appears to be one parcel, if you could sing a few more bars about that, Mr. McConaughey?
Yeah, there were, along with other affordable housing providers, the Low Income Housing Institute, Lehigh, submitted to council. I think several offices received requests to look at properties that either they have sort of partnerships with or have control of the property, to have more capacity on those sites, to redevelop, I guess, in the future would be the notion. The requests for the site was for more than LR2, but that wasn't supported by the EIS that was prepared. So this goes as far as is supported by one of the alternatives prepared under the final environmental impact statement, and consequently, you see a single parcel before you with this proposal for a change.
That's helpful. Yes, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Just a general question about all of these amendments, is, in terms of, so all of these proposed amendments, unlike the amendments we're seeing in some of the other proposed map amendments, are all up zones, which also bump up the affordable housing requirements as well. Can you tell me, in all of these instances, in all four of these, is this the maximum amount of density that we're allowed to pursue based on the EIS?
Yes.
Thank you.
So with that, I believe we'll consider that to be part of the consent package as well, and we'll move on to District 4.
So District 4, I'm going to start with maps 42A and 42B, as they sort of work together and carry on the theme that Councilmember O'Brien and Councilmember Johnson have spoken to in terms of addressing transitions. Amendment 42A would reduce the proposed zone designation north of northeast 70th Street, from the proposed low-rise 1 to RSL. And then Amendment 42B, the area immediately south of this area would go rather from LR2 to LR1, so it would create more of a step down.
Questions about this one, colleagues? Please, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Oh, no, sorry.
Councilmember O'Brien?
I just want to flag, are we going to get to the intellectually less honest, it's coming soon. You'll make sure we're paying attention when we get to that one?
We're dangerously close, Councilmember O'Brien. So unless there's objection, we'll consider that to be part of the consent package. 44A?
Okay. Maps 44A and 44B are somewhat similar, but with slight variation. So Amendment 4-4A is looking at the areas that are in the designated Historic District in the Ravenna Cowan North Historic District. So Amendment 4A would reduce the changes to M-level bump in areas where the Historic District overlaps with the existing urban village boundary. So it would mean that the urban village boundary would not be expanded in this area, and rezones would not apply in the proposed expansion areas, and any area that's already within the urban village would be reduced to an M-level bump. And much of this area is, you know, proposed either for an M1 or M2, so it would go to an RSL rather than a low-rise zone. And then Map 4B would remove entirely any areas that are within the Historic District from the proposed rezone. And so this, the district actually spans across the existing urban village boundary, so you can sort of see there is a small area along northeast 65th and just, I think that's 21st Street there, or 21st Avenue, excuse me. So all of those areas would be removed from the proposal, MHA would not apply, and the urban village would not be expanded.
So here we are. We've arrived at that location, Councilmember O'Brien. You know, I struggle with this, and we'll ask my colleagues to allow for an individual vote on this when we come back around to it on the 25th, and I struggle for a couple of reasons. One is we are... One is we are in this neighborhood. We are all very aware of the massive amount of investments that is coming to the neighborhood in the form of the light rail station that is set to open in 2021. Concurrently, this is a neighborhood that has been very active in neighborhood planning and is asked for, on several occasions, both additional zoning height in that neighborhood to correspond near the location of the light rail station, as well as originally a move of the proposed light rail station from what was proposed to be underneath the freeway at Green Lake and I-5 to the heart of the Roosevelt Urban Village. Then, Urban Village has been in existence since the Urban Village designations happened more than 25 years ago. However, we do have a recognition of a new historic district that has been created in the neighborhood over the last year since the EIS was first published. So I am not prepared to signal at this point which way my heart's going to land on these proposals, but I wanted to give my colleagues a range of options to consider because I think that there are real and difficult choices to make in this neighborhood, recognizing the many comments that were made earlier about this being a neighborhood with high access to opportunity and low risk of displacement, particularly with the proximity to the light rail station. So I'll stop there and again, confess, this is a place where I think we've got some really difficult choices ahead of us, and I welcome additional thoughts or considerations. Please, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Well, Chair Johnson, unlike you, I'm going to remain intellectually consistent and express my concern about this particular approach. I understand the motivation and the logic behind 4-4A and 4-4B. I feel as though I see those in the same category as the District 3 Mount Baker... Sorry, District 2 Mount Baker amendments that were proposed by Council President Harrell. And so I understand why we are doing that in that context, but I have a lot of concerns about several of the down zones that are proposed in other parts of District 4 for the same reasons that I've expressed in District 1.
I told you what was happening, Councilmember.
No, I'm just pointing it out.
Any other questions or thoughts that folks want to express? Councilmember Herbold.
I just want to say they're not down zones, they're still up zones. They're just reduced up zones from what is proposed.
And that is true for one of these amendments, it is not true for the other. The other one would preserve everything as single-family. So I want to be transparent with folks.
No, no, I appreciate that. It's, in general, there has been portrayal of these amendments as down zones in the press and in emails that we've received. And in general, they're not down zones, they are reductions in what is proposed, and they are still up zones for what is currently existing.
Councilmember O'Brien?
I'm sorry, I just want to say, stand corrected, and I will endeavor to be more precise in my language in the future.
All over.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Brien?
Councilmember Johnson, I appreciate your transparency about your concerns here. And kidding aside, I think this is a challenge of balance, and I share the dilemma that you're in here, or that we're all in here, frankly. Just to speak specifically to some of the challenges, we are having, you know, massive investment in light rail that will be coming online momentarily. And the principle of putting significant amounts of housing and commercial space near light rail is really important. I do recognize that this is a neighborhood that broadly over the years has been very supportive around the light rail station of additional density. I believe they had the "Yimpy" signs in yards at one point, "Yes, in my front yard," at a time when that was even less popular than today to talk about. And I do, I think the issue around historic designations is another one that is complex. I think it's really important that we create lots of opportunities for housing and jobs near light rail stations and throughout the city in general. And I also think it's important that we find ways to preserve those historic areas. When we get to District 6, we will not be talking about up zones along Ballard Avenue. There's a historic district there, and I don't believe that'll be controversial. It's obviously been established for a long time as opposed to a relatively new one. And so I think we do have consistently supported historic districts. As we add residential neighborhoods to historic districts, I think the scale which we're talking about today is certainly acceptable. I could possibly see a future where we may have dozens of residential historic districts where we could really push an issue that we'd have to struggle with. But today, I'm supportive, as of in District 2, of taking some action to acknowledge and respect that historic designation. You know, there may be future conversations going forward, but I think at this move in MHA, I talked about the three main principles that I have, and I could have a fourth one that's maybe a little subsidiary to that, but it's around historic districts and figuring out how we do, how we manage that. This one is actually, would push, would change some lines in ways that are inconsistent with some of the things I laid out, but that might be the exception that I'd be willing to make, too.
So I'm going to ask for individual votes on these two items when we get to it on the 25th, and I'll look to see if there's anybody else who'd like to add comments about this.
And I am supportive of what you're trying to do, Council Johnson. I have a deep appreciation for the challenge you're under, and I know you're a density advocate, but I also know that you, as we all do, we value neighborhood, neighborhoods and neighborhood voice as we're making these decisions. So it's a complex scheme of things, and I appreciate your advocacy for your district.
Thank you. Councilmember Skid.
I'll just reiterate, I appreciate your leadership on this. I appreciate that you're interested in having individual votes. I think the additional data that we get could be helpful as well. It could eliminate some of the trade-offs that we're considering here. I think that this entire council is very concerned about helping to ensure that historic districts receive the attention and resources that they need so that our community can continue to thrive. But if we think about the fact that we're going to be steps away from the Roosevelt Light Rail Station scheduled to open in 2021, that's also a huge opportunity to create dense living opportunities, affordable opportunities for more communities to enjoy your incredible district. So look forward to having that discussion on the 25th and appreciate your leadership on it.
Great. Let's move on to 46.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes, please.
I'm sorry, I was remiss in the previous two, 42A and 42B. Similar to the conversation we just had, these are near light rail station opening in 2021, near good grocery stores, schools, and other amenities. I'd like to see if we could also consider additional data on the 25th as we look at those two.
I'm hearing that as a request for individual votes on those two amendments. So as council central staff are keeping track of those, then let's reverse course on that. Ms. Panucci, 46.
46. This is an amendment that applies to parcels located at 6207 to 6211 12th Avenue Northeast and 1012 to 1032 Northeast 62nd Street. This would increase the proposed zoning from low-rise 1 to low-rise 2.
One of the few places in the district where we did study something higher than what was proposed, and this is across the street from the historic district but still in the heart of the Roosevelt neighborhood. I'm not seeing any opposition to that, so we'll call that as part of the consensus package. 410, Ms. Panucci.
410 is a proposal to increase the zoning proposed for 4907 25th Avenue Northeast from NC 255 to NC 275. And I just want to note that the M designation was left off of the amendment sheet that would increase the MHA requirement from an M-level bump to an M1-level bump.
Any questions about this one, folks? Okay, we'll consider that to be part of the consent package. 414.
414 would reduce the proposed zoning in the Wallingford Urban Village north of 49th Street from low-rise 1 to RSL.
This is, again, one of those issues that contemplates transition zones and would ask my colleagues to consider a small transition zone between the low-rise 1 zone to the south and the single-family on the other side of the street of 50th. I'm not seeing any objection to that. Councilmember Musketi, though, you're grabbing a microphone? Maybe?
On 4... Can I hear the presentation on 414 through 417?
Altogether?
Maybe we could consider those?
Sure, sure.
So 415 is a similar but a different area that is proposed to go from low-rise 1 into the area currently zoned single-family north of 46th Street, and the amendment would modify that to RSL.
And then shall we do 417 for Councilmember Musketi as well?
Sure. Similarly, also within the Wallingford Urban Village, the area is zoned single-family north of 40th between Ashworth and Dunsborough. It would reduce the proposal from low-rise 1 to RSL.
Go ahead, Councilmember Musketi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm concerned about the accumulation of the lost units, lost opportunity to live in the area, with these three being reductions for our community to live in that area. I would, I think I would like to see the data, Mr. Chair, and ask if we can weigh that data against the fact that this area is three miles from downtown, it's been identified as a high-opportunity neighborhood, it's very well-served by transit. I'm concerned about reducing the opportunity for folks to live there, also through the equity lens in terms of how accessible this neighborhood is to much of our downtown core and other job opportunities. So I think I do have concerns about the three of these together.
Please.
Yeah, I just, and we could talk about this more at the end when we're talking about maps, but I just want to set expectations about what sort of data is possible for us to present to the council. So the impacts of an individual amendment will have a very modest or difficult-to-acertain impact on the proposal in terms of how many MHA units we think will result from the implementation of the overall proposal, as well as how many housing units in general. So we will be, because of the way the city does their planning and capacity building, it looks at the overall zoning changes and the growth estimates and how that growth will be distributed. So any one individual change, I'm not going to be able to say, if you rezone this parcel to this instead of that, that will mean there will be one less MHA unit. We can definitely do it at the citywide scale, we can do it at the district scale and somewhat at the urban-village scale, but anything more than that, it will be difficult for us to tell you the impacts of one individual amendment. So it will be the suite of amendments by sort of larger areas that we'll be able to report back on, sort of, if you do this. Entire suite of amendments, the impacts overall and by district and urban-village would result in X fewer units.
And Ms. Panucci, I assume it would also be fair to say that as we continue to contemplate those text amendments that we discussed earlier on, that has an impact on development standards, and those development standards has an impact on the kind of units that get produced, and all of that would be factored into a complicated equation that you would then run for us about the proposed relationship between all of those interlocking elements in an urban village like Wallingford.
Yeah, that is correct, and I'm happy to, you know, talk with you all more individually to, if you really want to get in the weeds on the growth model and those sorts of things. But in general, if it is going from low-rise to RSL, what would be required from that property would be, if it redevelops, is less than what would be required if it's a higher zone, and if it's going up, more would be required. So in general, you understand the implications, we just won't be able to give you a parcel-by-parcel level impact analysis.
Any follow-up questions, Councilmember Musketi? Councilmember O'Brien?
I'm just going to flag that as we get into District 6 in the Crown Hill area, there's a similar discussion about RSL. I'm going to save my, the case I want to make till we get there, just because I know the landscape there, but I think some of the things I'll say are similar to what we've seen here and similar to what we saw in District 1. All urban villages with significant single-family zoning today inside an urban village.
And to Councilmember Herbold's point, all of these changes still result in an elimination of single-family to something denser, and the decisions contemplated here are just less dense than what is in the executive's proposal. But I hear your request, Councilmember Musketi, that these three Wallingford-related amendments should be considered for individual votes. Please, Ms., unless I'm missing anything, please, Ms. Panucci, let's move to 418, Eastlake.
Amendment 418 would increase the proposed zoning on the eastern edge of the Eastlake Urban Village from LR3 to mid-rise.
Any questions about this one, folks? I'll just offer, in several of the conversations that I have been to in the Eastlake Community Council, I've heard a diversity of opinions on this topic, but I believe that this amendment is consistent with what I've heard, which is a desire to see taller buildings closer to the freeway and smaller-scale buildings as we move closer to the water. So this change to mid-rise allows for slightly taller buildings to be built on the eastern edge of the Eastlake neighborhood. So I wonder if there are any questions or thoughts about this. Mr. Lehman, public comment will happen at the end of the meeting. Please, 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 please sit back, please sit back down, Mr. Lehman. So seeing no objection to that, we'll ask for 418 to be included as part of the consent package. 419, Ms. Panucci.
419 is a single-family zoned area between 16th and 17th Avenue Northeast, south of 68th Street. This amendment would reduce the proposed urban-village expansion area and would not rezone this area, so MHA would not apply.
This is one of the few places in the city where the proposed environmental impact statement expanded the urban villages in Roosevelt, and in Roosevelt, it took that urban-village boundary all the way to 17th Avenue. What I'm proposing here is to reduce that urban-village boundary expansion to 16th Avenue, which has been a request from the community. Any questions about this or comments, please? Councilmember O'Brien?
One of my framework, kind of three guiding principles was urban villages represent the kind of walk shed from a high-capacity transit. Could you speak to, I'm guessing this is depending on how you walk on the border of things?
Yeah, just exactly on the border. I mean, the way that the proposal is written is that the urban-village boundary expansion would go to 17th for the most part, just for these couple of blocks because of that walk shed, as well as a couple of blocks to the south. Those southern blocks are covered by amendments that we discussed earlier related to the historic district. This is not part of the proposed historic district, but there is a heavily underutilized set of properties on the border between 15th and 16th Avenue that is dilapidated, strongly underdeveloped, and in several cases actually is shells of buildings because they've burned significantly. So this continues to focus the development patterns on that section between 15th and 16th Avenue and pulls out the section between 16th and 17th, which is right on the edge of that walk shed. Councilmember Musketi, do you have something you wanted to add?
Did my face do something?
Yeah, I did.
I appreciate the conversations that you've had in the district, Mr. Chair. I think that the concern that I have is about removing bits and pieces of the areas where MHA would apply, and I still have questions about how this fits in overall with our efforts to try to approach the urban-village expansions. And I am concerned about the implications of these small blocks, might they be, and how they would affect our goals here.
Okay, I'm hearing that as a request for an individual vote on this topic, so we'll consider that one for an individual vote. Okay, that concludes, I believe, District 4, Ms. Panucci, does it not? Okay, let's move on to District 5.
So...
Yes.
Any opening remarks you'd like to make?
Yes, I do, actually.
Please.
I know, I'm being very, yeah, I feel like I'm back in the courtroom again. I'm just going to make some brief remarks because I want to be mindful of the time, and I know that we have snow coming and people are worried about that. District 5 is 85th to 145th, it's approximately 13 square miles, and today we have five amendments relating to Bitter and Holler Lake, Northgate, and Aurora Lipton Springs in the urban village. I believe there are five items under there. I want to briefly just kind of go over what we've been dealing with in community regarding the characteristics and the demographics and the history of District 5, and I hope I have the appreciation and the support of my colleagues. D5 is the only district that has three state highways and one interstate. As you know, I-5 splits D5, 10 lanes right down the middle. We have two light rail stations, we got Northgate coming in in 2021, and 130th coming in much sooner, I mean after, well, after Northgate. D5 has a college, a hospital, a major mall, two hotels, and two more hotels coming online. We have two high schools, 13 elementary schools, and two middle schools. We also have five shag housing, as you know, for our elders. And we are now at 51% I believe of renters and 49% of homeowners. So needless to say, D5 is going through a lot of growth and density in our urban villages and surrounding neighborhoods. As I said earlier, when we were looking at these five amendments, we certainly started with the issue of displacement, looking at providing affordable housing, and that would include two and three bedrooms rather than just one-bedroom condos. And as Councilmember Gonzalez and Musketi stated earlier, we have a real emphasis on transit-oriented childcare. When we have these rich transit spines and all of this density and housing coming in, we are mindful that people are bringing their children to light rail, and they should be able to drop off their children, hopefully buy groceries, and hop on light rail and be downtown in eight to 12 minutes. So needless to say... So needless to say, with that all said, there is opportunity for growth, and we've had an opportunity for community input and discussion, and with that, we can just go through the five amendments.
Mr. Freeman.
All right, so the first amendment, 5.1, is on the Bitter Lake, Holler Lake Urban Village, and this is an amendment for which Councilmember Sawan is a proponent. This would not upzone an area that is currently developed with two mobile home parks. The proposal under MHA would be to upzone this to C155M.
Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you. As you all know, on January 28th, this council passed unanimously the work plan of SDCI with the moratorium, beginning in February to May, with the work plan with the, NCI, I'm sorry, SDCI getting back to us on the legislation and the SEPA issues. And then it will conclude sometime in October and December with council deliberations and public hearing regarding the moratorium. And certainly, this is one of the areas where we looked at. We did not want to displace 85 senior residents, nor did we want to displace the occupants of the 76 people that live in the manufactured homes in the mobile park. So I would be co-sponsoring this along with Councilmember Sawan. I want to thank you too, Councilmember Johnson, for working on the moratorium with me.
Thank you. This is, again, one of those places where I want to express my support as well, though it is rare for me to consider that we should not be applying MHA in places because of the one-year moratorium that has been put on these properties and because of the additional work that we will be doing. I would hope to provide some additional zoning proposals that would come to represent maybe a new manufactured home park district or other such proposals. I think it is wise for us to not implement MHA on these two parcels and allow for those individual pieces of legislation that will be contemplated to come forward and govern what potential land uses could look like on this quarter. So I also would like to be listed as a sponsor here, and I think that this is a wise decision to not implement MHA on these two parcels.
And I should add that we are in discussions and have had discussions with the executive about having something more robust than just a moratorium, because the moratorium doesn't stop the property from being sold. And I think that was a misnomer that was put out there. And so we know what the moratorium does, but we know that we're going to have discussions to hopefully work for that this property, you know, can actually sustain and apply mandatory housing and do other things with that property in the future.
It looked like Councilmember O'Brien asked to be listed as a co-sponsor.
Okay.
Any other individuals? Councilmember Herbold? Councilmember Bagshaw? Councilmember Muscata, do you have something you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you. Just to explain where I'm at on this specific amendment, I also support Councilmember Juarez's desire to keep this in the consent package precisely because there was already a conversation had about the moratorium, and more importantly, I think because we're engaged in conversations with the trustees, talking about potential ownership opportunities, talking about potential denser affordable housing opportunities for seniors. So to illuminate my position on this and to show that there is consistency still because of the existing moratorium that's there, I'm comfortable with this remaining in.
Shall we move on?
Yes.
Oh.
Tess?
Did you ever tee that up? Okay.
Mr. Freeman, is there 5.3?
Moving on to 5.3 here, so now we are across the highway in the Northgate Urban Center. This is a site that is currently developed with, among other things, the North Haven Senior Living Facility. What you are seeing here is likely to change. This amendment sheet shows a proposal to go from low-rise 3M to mid-rise M1 to consolidate zoning for portions of the site. A future iteration of this will likely show on the eastern portion of the site, a neighborhood commercial 2 with a 75-foot height limit. That was a proposal that was analyzed under the Alternative 2 and the AIS, and some other treatment for the eastern portion of the site, based on some conversations with North Haven that happened yesterday.
Councilmember Juarez.
I'd just add that I think we have our North Haven folks in the audience here today, and we've been working closely with them for at least two or three years. And not only would it provide additional housing for our elders, but we're also including building a health clinic as well.
I'm not going to recommend this one for an individual vote. However, considering that there may be changes from the amendment today to what is proposed as part of the consent package, let's just flag that for a further discussion as we go through the consent package when we're back here on the 25th. 5.4, oh, please, yes, Councilmember Bagshaw.
I just want to let Councilmember Juarez know, I'm going to be leaving. I've got something that started 11 minutes ago, but I support where you are going with all of this, Councilmember O'Brien, the same thing. If there's anything that you need me to know in the next few days, please do, but I appreciate how much work that's already gone, and thank you, central staff. And we have nothing in D7, so no amendment. So I will be, thank you, and thanks to everybody who came and sat through this for the last three hours.
And I know several other folks may have lunchtime commitments, so they may want to choose to use this as an opportunity to depart as well, and I won't begrudge you that.
What?
Please, Mr. Freeman, let's continue.
So the next one, 5-4, this is on the eastern edge of the Northgate Urban Center, and this is correcting what was probably a technical error and what was transmitted to us from, by OPCD a year or so ago. This is a portion of the Northgate Urban Center that is proximate to a tributary to Thornton Creek. This would modify the proposal from low-rise 1 M1 to RSL M.
Councilmember Juarez.
I have nothing more to add, except I want to thank Councilmember Muscata for bringing this to our attention. That's it.
So we'll consider that to be part of the consent package. Please, continue, Mr. Freeman.
Wait, I think Councilmember Gonzalez has a question.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to get a little bit more information about this proposal because this is, this is a deviation from the current zoning and the proposed zoning. So it's going, it would be proposed to only go to RSL, and so I just want to, we don't have to have a conversation now because I know we're running late, but I just want to flag that I want to have additional conversations with Councilmember Juarez to better understand this proposal and just have some more discussion about this particular proposed amendment.
Now seems like a perfectly fair time to do that, Mr. Freeman. Is there, you said that there was a catch here of an error possibly?
Sure, we can, we can talk further, Councilmember Gonzalez, but generally, the principles that informed most of the proposal for Northgate recognizes that Northgate is a, is a high-displacement-risk area and also a low-access-to-opportunity area. So generally, across Northgate, most of the increases are lower than you might see in some place like Capitol Hill. Another principle that informed the executive zoning proposal was proximity to critical areas. So critical areas are areas in the city that generally see less development because they are either hazardous due to a geological condition or because they have some value for wildlife habitat. And so part of what informed what was probably the original proposal from OPCD that was not accurately reflected in the legislation that was transmitted to us was RSL for this area, and that's due to its proximity to one of those critical areas, a riparian corridor for Thornton Creek.
Okay, yeah, that'd be the south fork.
So what is driving this particular amendment is primarily the critical areas component that you've just described?
That's right, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm hearing that still as a request for an individual vote on that, Councilmember Gonzalez, or are your questions satisfied?
I think I have the information I need, so I'm fine with it moving on to the consensus agenda should I have additional concerns. I know that I have between now and the 25th to raise those and hopefully have additional information.
And you have an opportunity on the 25th, of course, to pull anything from the consent package itself as well.
Thank you.
Let's continue, Mr. Freeman.
So the next suite of amendments have to do with the Aurora Lipton Urban Village. 510, A through D are all thematically similar. What they would do would be to establish a pedestrian designation for portions of Aurora, generally between the commercial node at 85th up to about 100th Street. So areas in the Aurora Lipton Urban Village north of 105th, I think, or 100th, that are not currently, that do not currently have a pedestrian designation, would not have the controls that apply to the P-zone. So the area that is where, for instance, Handy Andy currently is, would not be affected by the pedestrian designation.
Councilmember Juarez.
I think that's all.
Any questions about this, colleagues? Seeing none, we'll consider those amendments to be part of the consent package. Finally?
Moving on to 511, this is a relatively new one. It was not discussed the last meeting. This would expand the Northgate Urban Center by about a half a block for an area that is just west of I-5, close to the hospital there. This alternative was analyzed, and Alternative 2 to the AIS, and it would rezone this area from single-family to low-rise 2 M1.
Councilmember Juarez.
We'd be supportive of this, and I want to thank Kittle, and also our constituent, Mr. Nielsen, reached out to us. He was unaware about what was going on with the amendments, and so we wanted to make sure we got it in the packet. We should, we should focus that that area is really building with the density that the University of Washington owns and Northgate, Northdale College is there, and with the pedestrian bike bridge coming in, you're going, we're seeing more density of people buying and renting and having more units because everyone is going to be going over the pedestrian bike bridge to get over to light rail. And north of that, we have, of course, the 130th Street, so this is, if there's time to buy property, would be now.
One thing, just to briefly note about this, this is a technical thing, but this amendment would also require a corresponding amendment to the comprehensive plan bill.
Any questions about this, colleagues? Seeing none, I'll consider that to be part of the consent package as well. Let's move on to District 6.
District 6, I'm going to be pinch-hitting here for my colleague. So Councilmember O'Brien may need to jump in here a little bit more than in other districts, as I haven't been as involved in creating these amendments, but I will do my best to characterize them accurately. So there are, in District 6, there are a number of amendments that are similar to other areas we have discussed. 63 is an area currently zoned single-family in the Crown Hill Urban Village. The proposal in the bill is to go to low-rise 1. This amendment would go to RSL, and this is similar for the next sort of five or six amendments, but we'll walk through them individually.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yeah, Councilmember Johnson, the suite of amendments, my preference would probably be to speak of them as a package, if we could do that.
By all means, Ms. Minucci, is that okay with you?
Yep, that's fine with me. So this would be all the areas zoned single-family in the Crown Hill Urban Village, which are amendments 63 through 611, and they are all proposals to modify what was in the, what was in the bill originally, and it is consistent with the principle that Councilmember O'Brien discussed previously, which is some going from low-rise 1 to RSL, some going from low-rise 2 to low-rise 1. So it's addressing transition areas.
And all these relate to the Crown Hill Urban Village, so I have that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, please, Councilmember O'Brien, you have the floor.
Could we also, could I also ask that, let me scroll through here, speak to 616 and 617, those are also in Crown Hill?
Sure. So 616 is the area of the intersection of 15th Avenue Northwest and Northwest 85th Street. So this is, the proposal is to go from NC 3P, excuse me, from low-rise 3 to NC 3P 75. The amendment would reduce that to 55 feet, and 617 is a commercial node at the intersection of 15th Avenue Northwest and 85th Street. The proposal is to go from NC 3P 40 to NC 3P 55. The amendment would increase that to 75 feet.
Thank you for highlighting that alley. So colleagues, I want to just walk through, Crown Hill is one of the handful of urban villages that's, that as of today has significant amount of single-family zoning in the urban village, and consistent with the framework we've talked about, everything in the framework would be zoned at a higher density and be required to have some level of affordability with that. Because there's a significant amount of single-family, there's an opportunity, I'll call it, to have a significant amount of residential small lot. And the base proposal has some residential small lot, and what my proposal, my series of amendments here would do, would convert some of the underlying proposal from low-rise to residential small lot and make some other kind of minor border adjustments to, to transition from the higher heights of neighborhood commercial to low-rise zones to residential small lots before we get to the boundary of the urban village, where it would transition to single-family. The, the work I've done with community out there, and I want to be clear that, like every community, there's a mix of opinions in the neighborhood, and there's no one group or individual. It speaks for that entire community. But an attempt over the last year to work with people in the community, including going out and knocking on doors and going to a number of meetings, to really try to understand where there was consensus. And another principle that I haven't talked about at the moment, but it's come up before, is that a desire that if we're going to make some shifts that would affect capacity and also affect the amount of affordable housing in one direction, to look for offsetting shifts in the other direction. And what the, a lot of folks in the Crown Hill area said they would like to see increased density along 15th, and so that is the, there's an amendment to increase from NC 55 to NC 75 for a stretch there, but then have that step down to residential small lot. And I want to speak specifically to why I think residential small lot, why I'm excited about residential small lot in this neighborhood in particular. I've been on a number of walking tours and have drugged folks from central staff out there with me a few times too, so thank you for participating in that. There's a lot of folks in the neighborhood that would like to see additional density, but they're concerned about the affordability of that additional density. And the lots in this neighborhood are somewhat large lots. They often have relatively small homes on them. They're already seeing redevelopment in the single-family zone, where a small house is torn down and a much larger single-family home replaces it. That changes certainly the kind of scale and feel of the neighborhood, which is one concern, but it also dramatically changes the affordability of the neighborhood. There's concern in some areas that a lot of shift to low-rise 1 would have that similar pressure that we've talked about. Well, the low-rise would produce, you know, would be mandated to produce some affordability. There's some overall concerns, and a desire to say, we think that, we think from the neighborhood, that they think that redevelopment under a residential small lot provides an opportunity to maintain existing structures and maintain the affordability level of those, hopefully even maintain the actual current residents of those, while adding additional capacity with additional structures on lots that certainly have room to accommodate that. Or if there's redevelopment, that would be redeveloped in a scale that may allow for that flexibility. I want to be clear that the residential small lot, for the most part, doesn't really exist in the city today, and what we're talking about through this suite of things, through the mandatory housing affordability, is essentially creating a new, a new type of land, and I don't want to pretend that I know exactly how this will play out. What I can tell you for sure is people will build some things that we didn't anticipate. I'm hoping that there'll be a lot of really good things that happen in residential small lot, and I wouldn't be surprised if there are things that get built that we say, oh, that was not what we intended, and we have to go back and make changes. There are a number of architects in the community who've been very vocal on engaging in what this looks like, and I think it's important that as we think about how we add more density without necessarily changing the maybe bulk and scale of some of our neighborhoods, that we have some areas we can try out. And I really hope that Crown Hill is one of those neighborhoods where in the next couple of years, we see folks experimenting with, with what this new flexibility provides, and I'm optimistic that at the end of it, we'll be able to see a lot of things that people, that maybe we say, but probably more importantly, people in the neighborhood say, I like the changes that are happening in my neighborhood. I like the additional capacity that's added. I like the fact that there's a range of affordability in this neighborhood. So the suite of, the suite of amendments that I proposed here will reduce the density from, of course, it's an increase in density from what's on the ground today, but it would reduce the density on some blocks from what is in the proposal, and it would increase the density in other blocks from what's on the proposal. I don't know that, I don't know that I could characterize that as we know that that's an equal offset or even how we would measure that, but the intent is to balance that a bit and allow for some exploration of residential small lot at a scale that I think could be kind of exciting. It's not unique to Crown Hill, but it's one of a few neighborhoods that we could see a lot of, of, it's interesting because it may not be redevelopment, you know, maybe additional development on top of existing development, which is something that I'm excited to see, and I think the lots here can accommodate that, and also respecting that there needs to be some transition zones. And so those transition zones are fairly narrow because of the design layout of the urban village, but I, I'm really excited to hear what my colleagues think about this. I've worked pretty hard with community members to strike a balance here that I think works. I will highlight one other little example. If you look at Amendment 63, that was all proposed to go to low-rise. We heard from some neighbors in there that wanted to see residential small lot. When we discussed that, we heard from some more neighbors in When we discussed that, we heard from some more neighbors in there who are, there's a kind of an L-shaped cutout at the bottom that abuts neighborhood commercial, also transition zone, said, hey, we would actually like to remain Low Rise as part of a small transition to residential small lot. And I believe we actually reached, maybe not, maybe beyond just consensus, but kind of unanimity in the neighborhood, at least from everyone we talked to when we walked around there, that everyone was supportive in Low Rise on those certain lots and residential small lots and adjacent lots. So anyways, I look forward to hearing colleagues, any suggestions you have or questions you have or concerns.
Crown Hill, folks. Councilmember Mosqueta.
Did I cut anybody off? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the sponsor of all these amendments. I do have a few questions. One is, on 16 and 17, is that a, are those two combined together? Do they impact each other? Is there a net neutral in terms of housing options there? I'm sorry, just because of the language and the description.
Sure. The 16, what's on the ground in, the amendment in 16, it's just a couple parcels that is currently zoned LR 3, and for some reason that I don't totally understand, the base proposal proposes that to go to 75. Well, the chunks on the, along the arterial where I'd expect to see more height had only proposed to go to 55. And so I never really understood exactly how that, the one in 16 went to 75, well, not the adjacent ones. My proposal would lower, from the, the base proposal, the chunk in 16, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 parcels, back down to 55 for a transition to Low Rise 2, and then increase the height from 55 to 75 on significantly more parcels. I can't count them all here, but it looks like it's roughly six times the area. So I don't think that those two, the net of those two, I believe, would be a significant increase in capacity on those.
Okay. So if I might, Mr. Chair, I think, I appreciate that, and those two, setting aside those two amendments, generally, as I look at the various proposals that are out here, I remain very concerned. Number one, I think I wouldn't have these concerns if we were considering applying residential small lot across the city. I think that would give us a lot of different density options, like the type you're trying to consider testing out. But given that we're talking about 6% of the land across all of the proposed changes in this MHA package, I still think that it is important for us to be looking at how we go to the maximum available under the existing EIS, recognizing that it is very relatively limited as it stands. I, I know that we're talking about not just, we're not downzoning. I want to be really clear, I agree with Councilmember Herbold's language and the language you used a minute ago, but even reduce capacity equals reduce numbers of people being able to live in that neighborhood, reduce numbers of housing units, and the ability for folks to have access to your asset-rich neighborhoods in District 6. So I'm, I'm concerned about a number of the amendments. I do think, you know, had we had the opportunity to have this be an RSL conversation citywide, it would be different because I think that there's various areas across the city that would like to explore those models you're talking about, since we're looking really specifically at various urban villages and the ability to create density in pockets throughout the city, I still remain interested in maximizing the diverse amount of houses that, and units that we can create for renters, for homeowners, for first-time homebuyers. We know that they will be well-served by your district and all the amenities, including access to transit and bike lanes, which we're still trying to get. And we want to make sure that more residents have access to that infrastructure that we're putting into District 6. So on a sort of general suite of the amendments you've discussed, I remain concerned about those that wouldn't, as you discussed with 16 and 17, level out to allow for greater density.
I was hoping to get us out of here before the snow started to fall, but unfortunately we did not meet that objective. What I'm hearing from you, Councilmember Mosqueta, is a desire, it sounds like, to keep the Crown Hill amendments together for individualized votes. And I want to give you the opportunity to respond to that statement, Councilmember O'Brien, but I just want to confirm that I heard that from you, Councilmember Mosqueta, with possibly the exception of the commercial node zoning change from 55 to 75 and from 75 to 55. I believe I heard you say that those you thought were appropriate to be included in the consent package, but that the remainder of the amendments 63 through 611 should be called out for individualized votes.
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember O'Brien, please.
Councilmember Mosqueta, I, I really appreciate your comments, not just on this particular changes, but throughout the day, and I, I don't have any philosophical difference, I don't believe there's any philosophical difference of what we're talking about here, and I think you speak well to the sense of urgency to address a whole host of issues around both affordability, and I think climate change fits in there, too. What I would suggest, a countervailing pressure on me is thinking about what redevelopment from single-family to low-rise would look like and what single-family redevelopment to residential small lot might look like. And while it's possible that someone could convert a larger home into a bigger development that would be consistent with low-rise, I'm not aware of actually seeing that in a single instance anywhere in our city. And so, you know, when low-rise gets, gets, when this neighborhood, if it were to be redeveloped to low-rise, we would see the, you know, the demolition of the existing structures and new structures going in, which is part of what happens in change, and it's , it's hard, and I'm, I'm open to that. What I'm excited about is the possibility, though, of retaining some of these spaces where folks can stay in place and be part of additional development and add capacity. And while it may not add as much square footage as we might see in low-rise zone, I think it's entirely possible that we add as many new units as we would see in the low-rise zone. Don't know that for sure, but I'm interested in seeing it. To your point about looking at low residential small lot across the city, I think that's a fair one, and it's something that I'm also intrigued by. I think the political reality right now is that, you know, we are in a democracy, and I don't know that our communities are ready to embrace that citywide. And I think one of the ways we would transition to that would be able to demonstrate that we have this new thing called residential small lot, and here's what it looks like. Drive to one of your neighborhoods down the street and see what you think about that. And so, I mean, I think the distinction is, do we do it in one big step, or do we take a few smaller steps? And I get the urgency to take it in one big step, and I don't know that we're quite ready to do that. And so that's why I'm excited about the residential small lot as a step to get there. I hope the step is a relatively swift step. I hope we get to see in the next couple of years what's possible. Well, when I look down here, it's a different view, isn't it? Look at that. I'm glad I bought my ski helmet for my bike ride home today. The, but I, I, I totally respect the points you're pushing, and I appreciate the dialogue here. I will likely stay on residential small lot as my suggestion for this, for the reasons mentioned, and I hope that we have an opportunity in the relatively near future to talk about possibilities of using residential small lot in, in many more areas of the city.
Anything to add? Please, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. I just want to echo Councilmember Mosqueta's points and rationale, and, you know, I think that the concept that somehow RSL is eventually going to get us to, to a point where, where people will suddenly be convinced that density is appropriate for their neighborhood, or that increased density is appropriate for their neighborhood, I'm not sure that that rings true for me as something that, that I think will actually occur. I mean, the amount of resistance that we've had even to this gentle amount of upzoning is pretty extraordinary, and I appreciate that we have, you know, accommodated some concerns in the current package and in prior packages. Certainly when we were taking this by neighborhood by neighborhood, we were able to more deeply engage in some of these neighborhoods that had, you know, very high risk of displacement ratings, for example, and, and I think that that's an appropriate thing for us to take into consideration. But I become incredibly worried about the net effect citywide in terms of affordable housing options in every part of the city when we start slowly chipping away at neighborhoods that have been evaluated, analyzed, and determined to be high opportunity and low risk of displacement. Now, low risk of displacement, I understand, does not mean zero displacement. It does mean that there is an opportunity for us to take a step forward in making sure that we are implementing policies in those areas that are truly going to result in more affordable housing units rather than, than less than the ones that are originally proposed. So I continue to have concerns about this particular direction. I see these, this suite of amendments and the arguments that you have made in favor of them to be similar to the ones that Councilmember Herbold has been making for the West Seattle area, and so I'm going to stay intellectually consistent here and, and say that I continue to have a lot of concerns, both about these and the others for those reasons.
So we've got a couple of amendments left to discuss, but before we get to that, Council President has an emergency order that he...
I just wanted to, it's a sub-... Well, click. I will say, Councilmember O'Brien, I do like your small steps approach, but that's not what I needed to say. So at 11 o'clock today, the emergency, the mayor did declare a civil emergency describing what very, what we're probably seeing now, which will be not only heavy snowfall, but wind gusts to the tune of 30 to, 35 to 45 miles. So the, the emergency order is in place now. It is in place when it was filed with the clerk, which was around 11 o'clock. We, as a council, and I'm saying this in an open public setting, that we can act, we can endeavor to act within 48 hours. If we do nothing and take no action, the, the order stays in place. And basically, this order, you all have it now in your inbox, it just gives the mayor the ability to make purchases for salt or other types of products to assist us, emergency aid, whatever's necessary, basically. So, so it's in place, we have 48 hours with which to act if we do nothing and stays in place. We can rescind it at any time when we can meet. And then lastly, your point of contact will be Dana Robinson-Slot in terms of what may happen Monday. So we do have our meeting, I believe, postponed from 9:30 to 11:00. Our briefing, I believe, will be 11:00, but depending on how it is, that may even get canceled. So stay tuned, but use Dana as your point of contact, okay? Okay. And this commercial is over.
So you don't anticipate that you would need us to take an action during this meeting in order to validate that emergency order that the mayor sent down?
Correct. I don't need, I, I'm not recommending at this point that we convene within 48 hours. At this point, you have the, we could tweak these emergency orders. I think this is actually a pretty solid one. It's, 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 it's wasn't necessarily, it's been sent to the governor, and again, look at it, and we can always rescind it on Monday if we so choose. Okay?
Questions about that for the Council President? Please, Councilmember Mosqueta.
Thank you, Mr. President. While we have the viewing, viewing audience's attention, just any additional information on the hours for shelters for our homeless population, will those, do we know if those will be 24/7, or are they still going to have to leave at 7:00 AM?
Yeah, I, I do not know.
Okay.
But I'll, when I, in fact, right now, I have to go back to the office, I'll see if we get the right notices.
Thank you so much.
Chair, if I, there was an email that just went out that I could speak to that point a little bit. This is from the, a news release from the Office of the Mayor that is just in the, in the section that discusses the Human Services Department. The City of Seattle is extending the severe weather shelter at the Seattle Center Exhibition Hall through Sunday night, February 17th. The HSD, HSD will partner with Mary's Place to open a downtown emergency shelter for families. The HSD and Parks and Recreation are opening a 24-hour warming shelter for families with children at Garfield Community Center through Monday morning, and there may be more announcements coming, as well as the Seattle Center Armory will operate on normal schedule today. And there's some other announcements throughout, but that is the update we have.
And Chair Johnson, if I may just hopefully punctuate this, the Seattle Police Department has also recently announced just with, in the last hour, that they are asking residents in the city who see somebody who might be cold and in need of shelter to, to dial 911. So this is pretty unusual for us. We typically don't use 911 for that type of call, but, but Seattle Police Department is encouraging members of our community to call 911 if they see someone who appears to be distressed, or maybe not in distress, but it may be in need of shelter, and Seattle Police Department will make sure that appropriate resources are deployed to assist those individuals.
Sobering statements, but necessary ones in a time of crisis.
We have two amendments, I believe, left to discuss that are not Crown Hill-related.
Okay. Amendment 6-15 is the block between 8th Avenue Northwest and 9th Avenue Northwest and Northwest, Northwest 56th Street and Northwest 57th Street. The proposal in the legislation is to go from single-family to Low Rise 1. This amendment would reduce that to RSL.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Thank you. This, I heard from a constituent who lives in this block almost a year ago, which is just to remind us how long we've been discussing these maps, with some concerns about Low Rise 1, preference to RSL. Since I put this amendment forward, I've heard from other, other folks who live on that block with a strong preference to keep it at LR 1. I actually went out there yesterday and biked around the block and down the alley between them, and I actually, I think that Low Rise 1 is actually a more appropriate fit for that, so I will, I would ask that we not move this amendment forward unless anyone else wants to sponsor it, if that's an appropriate request at this point. Councilmember Johnson.
What I'm hearing from you is a removal from further consideration, and that is perfectly appropriate. Okay. 618, I believe?
618, the final amendment. This amendment relates to the area adjacent to the Troll in the Fremont Urban Village. The proposal in the legislation is to go from Low Rise 1 to Low Rise 3. This would do, reduce that to Low Rise 1, and this is informed by input from the community, and we are, will be looking at the data provided in the addendum to the FEIS, but it relates to some potentially historic buildings in this area.
Appreciate that. Colleagues, this is an area, again, I'm not the expert on the history, but if you look at the underlying zoning in the neighborhood, this is a Low Rise 1 chunk of parcels that is surrounded by Low Rise 2. So there was clearly some desire in the past to keep it different. I know that the desire is in part around a series of homes on the south side of, I think it's 36th there, that certainly have a lot of historic character. I'm not an expert on speaking to the particular era they came from. I think they're Victorian, but I'm not positive, so. And so the request from community members was to, in an effort to maintain some of the historical character of that, to not move this up from Low Rise 1 to Low Rise 3, which would be an M1 bump. And what I'm proposing here is to keep it at Low Rise 1, which is an M bump. So it would still be part of the consistent framework within the urban village that would be required to contribute to affordable housing. If this amendment goes through, the adjacent parcels around it would be at Low Rise 3, and it would be at Low Rise 1, so that would be a distinction. And there's, it preserves some flexibility going forward to do some more work for designations around some of those structures that I, I think are, the character is pretty important. Just so folks are familiar, these are homes that are across the street from the Troll and on the street that is extremely slippery right now, because I was out there the other day.
And we share this amendment, about half is in your district and about half is in mine, Councilmember O'Brien, so I'd like to be added as a sponsor associated with this. Further questions about this one, colleagues? Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yeah, I just had, it's, it's, I just want to understand the rationale a little bit more, so maybe you can talk, this is an area that already has quite a bit of density, so I'm, I'm just wanting to get a clearer sense of, given that there is already pretty, a pretty good amount of density there, why take this approach?
So the, currently on the ground, there's a distinction between these parcels at Low Rise 1 and the adjacent parcels essentially fully surrounding it at Low Rise 2. And again, I wasn't part of the decision to make that distinction, but I believe through previous neighborhood planning processes, because of the historic nature of some of the homes, and I say historic with like a lowercase h, I don't believe they're designated...
Have an official designation.
That they, for whatever reason, in those planning processes, there was a distinction to be made. The underlying proposal that were, the base proposal moves everything to Low Rise 3, and so it would eliminate that distinction. My proposal is to maintain a distinction, it would be a little greater distinction because everything else is going from Low Rise 2 to Low Rise 3, and this would stay at Low Rise 1. It would still get the bump from Low Rise 1 today to Low Rise 1 with an M designation, which has additional capacity. I, I can't remember, it's additional 10 feet of height, but it is intended to not put pressure on redevelopment that's happening in the area on those specific sites, and to allow some possibility for some designations going forward. That may or may not happen. Again, it's, but it, there's been a lot of pressure in that neighborhood for a long time, and for whatever reason, the people that own those buildings haven't redeveloped most of those, and so I'm not sure what impact this would have one way or the other, but I do know that there are a lot of community members that would like to see a handful of those kind of historic-looking Victorian homes stay preserved, if that's possible. kind of historic-looking Victorian homes stay preserved, if that's possible.
I have, I just have ongoing concerns about that approach, and, you know, I think that the other proposed amendments in Mount Baker and Ravenna, we, we decided, we are advancing or, you know, putting on the consensus agenda amendments that acknowledge the historic resource designation, but I think the trigger there is that there's actually been a designation. So I worry about the precedent and opening the door to allowing more carving out of some of these spaces on the basis that, that people believe the homes to be historic. And so I just, I'm a little concerned about the precedent that that sets, and, and again, particularly in an area that is, that is already part of an urban village.
I understand those concerns. And to be clear, there's at least one person in the audience who's in a meeting with me this week, that I believe, or in the last couple of weeks, that part of the community members had requested to leave it at low-rise 1 without the M bump, so no zoning change at all. And I don't agree with that, because I do believe within an urban village as close to transit, that everything should participate in it. The level to which it participates, whether it's an M bump, an M1 bump, or an M2 bump, I think that, I certainly feel that, that we can have some discretion within that framework to set that. And I do think that the lowercase h historic nature of this allows us to stay on the lower end of that bump. But I would not be supportive of doing no designation and essentially carving this out, unlike what we did at Mount Baker and in Ravenna, at least one of the proposals in Ravenna is to carve those out and say, we're not going to upzone those at all. I still agree that there should be an upzone here, it's just a more modest one as opposed to a higher one.
Okay.
But your concerns, I, it's a balancing act, and I think everything you said, like Councilmember Muscati on the previous one, I completely agree with the concerns there. I guess I'd probably say, and I'm just balancing it a little more this direction at the moment.
And I'm hearing your request, Councilmember Gonzalez, as a request to pull this one out for an individual vote when we get to...
We can leave it on the consensus agenda, but I just want to think a little bit more between now and then about this particular proposal. But I see Councilmember Muscati making a face.
Oh. I would, I'm in the same boat of desiring additional information and to have a conversation with you and maybe the folks from central staff about sort of the precedent as well. So if you would be interested in having those discussions on the 25th, I would also, I think, like to see this added to our list for consideration then.
If I, colleagues and public, I will actually not be here on the 25th.
What?
Yeah. And so my schedule did not align with the schedule that came forward. So I, but I am, I will be available somewhere in the city all next week to have discussions about this, and would love to engage with folks about that. And so, and, you know, I may be calling in on the 25th, depending on, but that's, I know that's not the same as an in-person discussion, so.
And, and we have not had a chance to connect about this, Councilmember O'Brien, so we're talking about it in real time, but one of the alternatives for us to consider could be holding off District 6 amendments until the final committee, or full council discussion, rather, on the 18th of March. So we, let's, let's continue to talk when we have a chance. Colleagues, I believe that concludes the amendments. Ms. Penucci, any final words of thought?
No, that concludes the amendments. I just want to reiterate that we will be continuing to work with all of you to finalize amendments following the public hearing and before the potential committee vote. I would note, we had said somewhere in the conversation that we'd have more of a discussion on the potential impacts on the housing unit estimate and the MHA unit estimate. I might suggest, given the weather and the time, that what I can commit to doing is preparing a more detailed memo that frankly would be probably more useful to you than me on the fly trying to walk through how, what these impacts could be in advance of the public hearing that we could make available to the public as well. And I'm happy to meet with you individually in the meantime to talk through some of the pros and cons of going one way or the other.
And I would also just offer that, based on sort of my back-of-the-envelope calculations, we have about half of the amendments that we discussed today as part of the consent package of amendments for discussion on the 25th, and about half remain. So as there, as conversations progress over the next couple of weeks, I would strongly encourage my colleagues to talk to each other so that we don't have individual votes on, for example, 40 different amendments, but to do the best that we can to keep that number focused on a smaller number so that we are not progressing long into the evening on Monday, February the 25th. Colleagues, we're about to kick it off to public comment, but I wonder if anybody has any last-minute thoughts that have occurred to them that they feel like they'd like to share before we move on to public comment. Councilmember Muscati, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to congratulate you for your inclusive and intense process, working with various communities, having meetings in district. How many meetings did you say you had on this process?
I believe we've had 42 council-led meetings and more than 200 meetings led by various city departments over the last three years.
Very impressive. Thank you for getting us to this last and final hurdle. I also want to just thank my colleagues. I know that there was an intense conversation today, and we have two more weeks plus to have more conversations about the various amendments, but I, I know that we are all very interested in making sure that we are providing clarity on the amendments that are being included. So the data will be helpful, the ongoing conversations with central staff will be helpful, and community at large will be helpful. I also want to reiterate that I think it's important for us to remember that even though some of these changes are being proposed, that doesn't equal demolition. What it does is that equals legalization of existing units that are throughout our city that have been rezoned and considered illegal. The apartment that I live in on 10th and Lee in Queen Anne is now not legally allowed to be built in that neighborhood because we have taken a multifamily zone and over the decades have rezoned it into a single-family zone. So what we're talking about really is trying to look at the existing fabric of our city and right some wrongs that would allow for additional folks to be able to live in that city. I want to make sure that as we do that, we are very thoughtful, as Councilmember O'Brien has talked about, and I think as we've also talked about before, that when we think about development, we think about those who've been at risk of displacement for the longest, those who are lower income, those who are seniors who are on fixed income, and trying to make sure that we're thinking about how we build a city that protects those who are here and also allows for those who've been pushed out to come back, also allows for those who want to come to our city to be able to live here. So as we think about changing the density requirements around the city, it is truly looking at the historic routes that allowed for more people to live in city, in the city across various areas, and correcting some of the historic wrongs, as Councilmember Juarez talked about. I'm going to be bringing forward to the committee at the next time we meet some of those sightline maps that we've discussed that show from the early 1920s the ways in which single-family zoning has actually increased instead of decreased, as you would think it would do as we're adding about 1,000 people a week to our region, growing by about 20, 18% over the last few years. We want to make sure that we are looking at that history as we think about growing in the future, but I don't want folks to think that it automatically equals a change in the neighborhood. The neighborhood character is because of the people. It's because of the small businesses. It's because of the community centers. And as we think about creating more opportunities for those people to be able to stay in place and for more people to enjoy it, I think we are hitting a right balance of looking at how do we ensure that people, small businesses, community centers can thrive throughout our city and that more people can have access to it. So thank you for your ongoing leadership to get us to this point, and I hope we think about that, that balance as we go over the next two weeks.
Thank you, Councilmember Muscati. Any other thoughts that folks would like to share? Okay, hearing none, I want to now, we've been up for public comment. We have about 40 individuals who signed up to give public comment, though I anticipate many of them have actually left considering the weather conditions outside. Out of respect for those that are here, we're going to allow for two minutes of public comment, and I would ask you to come to one of the two microphones at the front of the auditorium so that we can all make sure that we try to get home safely. The first person who signed up to speak is Alex Zimmerman. Alex, you're going to be followed by David Blum and then John Fox.
Thank you, sir. Zihai, my lovely Fuhrer, my name Alex Zimmerman. I, I love you. I love you for many years. You're doing very good job. Thousand pages, thousand pages, thousand pages of nice, beautiful job. Is this, everybody will be happy right now. Council will be happy. 700,000 idiot will be happy. 50 percentage poor people who pay for rent and housing too much will be happy. Rabbit in this room will be happy, need little bit courage. Everybody happy. I like Seattle. Everybody happy in this city. Yeah. People dying sometimes, yeah. 200 homeless. It's happened, yeah. It's happened. It's America. It's Seattle. Yeah. Poor people, like senior citizen, need move out because cannot afford. Yeah. It's America. So, New York, for example, much smarter than you guys. New York don't like Amazon. New York understand what is Amazon did to you. And for five years, no one from you talking about Amazon stopping. Only one man, Alex Zimmerman. Only one man, Alex Zimmerman. Only one man, Alex Zimmerman. For five years talking about stopping Amazon. Make something, you know what it means? Cut Amazon, little bit, stop in Amazon. Swan bring another 10,000 people. This will be nightmare. Everything what is you did, this a pure, pure masturbation, bullshit, stupidity. Nothing will be changed for another probably 20 or 50 years. So you're doing good job. Exactly. For this, I like you. Hello, my lovely Fuhrer. Stand up, America. Stand up, Seattle. We need cleanse this dirty chamber from this cretina and rapist together.
Mr. Blum, I apologize that you have to follow, Mr. Zimmerman.
I'll do my best.
But I know, I know that you will do your best. You're going to be followed by John Fox and then Toby Thaler.
Councilmembers, my name is David Blum. I'm the board president of the Seattle Displacement Coalition. According to city permit data, between 2016 and 2018, nearly 2,400 existing housing units were torn down to make way for new development with applications pending for another nearly 750. 60 to 80% of these demolitions were affordable units, many in single-family rentals. Total demolitions have risen dramatically, specifically within the five areas of the city where the HALA MHA upzones already apply. In many instances, a developer will tear down more existing low-income and very low-cost units than what MHA requires them to provide. Unless measures are put in place to ensure that developers replace one-for-one any low-income housing they remove, this HALA MHA plan is nothing more than a blueprint for accelerated loss of affordable housing stock in the name of increasing our affordable housing stock. These impacts are at odds with the city's racial justice and equity goals, as well as its professed commitment to end homelessness. The city needs legislation requiring developers to replace one-for-one existing low-income housing they remove at comparable rents. This policy would give discretion to the decision-makers to require a developer to replace all or a portion of the existing lower-cost units and at comparable price. It would apply only in those areas identified as high-risk of displacement or areas already mapped as having high concentrations of poverty and people of color. Councilmember Muscati seems to equate upzones with more affordable housing. We believe that the opposite is true. Without strong anti-displacement language, if we continue to upzone the city without protecting existing low-income housing and residents, we will continue to lose.
Thank you. Mr. Fox? You're going to be followed by Toby Thaler and then Steve Zemke.
John Fox, Displacement Coalition. We have three, two and a half years of experience with MHA in the University District. I have here a list of projects that have either filed for permits or obtained permits. There are 26 developments. Eight of those involved direct demolition of the existing stock of low-income housing. On those sites, we're going to lose 168 units of existing low-income and affordable housing. We went door-to-door and we inventoried them. Workers who work at the UAW, students, elderly people, and so on, on those same eight sites, we're going to get 84 MHA units for a net loss of 84 affordable housing. And don't tell me that, oh, well, those units would be demolished or removed anyway. Go stand at 42nd and 12th and look up the street at all those existing affordable housing. They have a long, they would have had a long life had we not changed the zoning there. This department, the planners, identified only 40 units in the IS over the planning period of 20 years that would be torn down. We're already losing 168 in two and a half years. There are 1,400 units of affordable, structurally sound housing in that neighborhood. We need a one-for-one replacement measure. Minneapolis, you've heard about Minneapolis zoning their lower-density areas, rezoning them. Maybe you, but what you haven't heard is that they have approved, that they will phase in those upzones, and they've approved an anti-displacement policy that includes a prohibition on the demolition of SRO housing unless the units are replaced one-for-one. It includes a commitment before the upzones to deal with and prevent the displacement of naturally occurring housing throughout their city.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
We need one-for-one replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
As a prerequisite to this plan.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Fox.
Otherwise, you're just going to be responsible for more displacement, more gentrification.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
And driving a deeper wedge.
Mr. Thaler, will you, Mr. Thaler? Mr. Thaler, please come forward.
Please.
Mr. Thaler. Mr. Zemke, would you please come to the other microphone? And you're going to be followed by Cindy Barker.
The purpose of the MHA program is to provide affordable housing. The city has consistently agreed that there is no need to increase development capacity but for the ability to either require inclusionary housing on-site or obtain a fee in lieu in order to build affordable housing. However, there is a chance the litigation will result in inclusionary and fee provisions being declared unenforceable in whole or part. Please give, please, the giveaway of development capacity without obtaining impact fees, inclusionary housing, or any other mitigation or benefit needs to stop. Amendment B6 is critical to ensure that the city doesn't increase capacity under MHA and end up getting no affordable housing or anything else except gentrification and displacement in return. Thanks, Councilmember Herbert, and I hope the rest of you for B6, I hope you'll all support that amendment and make it work. I know it's complicated. My neighborhood, Fremont, has had severe displacement of middle to low-income households over the past 20 years. Documented in Appendix M of the MHA EIS, Fremont's Central Census Tract has had the highest displacement in the city for households under 50% AMI. So the Appendix A Equity Analysis says that Fremont is a low-displacement-risk neighborhood. Come on, it's not accurate. All I got to do is look at the census data. We're being displaced of low-income people. Existing multifamily housing buildings continue to be redeveloped in a way that replaces existing affordable housing without any provision to replace. I'm going to give you a MUP number, 3033280, 3033280. Same number of units replacing renters with high expense. If you give me another 30 seconds, I'll be happy to explain the history of the Troll zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Thaler.
But we can do that later.
Steve, you're going to be followed by Cindy Barker and then Sarah Jane Siegfried.
And I have two copies of a printout of the Troll.
Mr. Zemke, go ahead.
Steve Zemke, representing the Coalition for Stronger Tree Ordinance, want to thank the council for putting an amendment on to deal with trying to compensate for some of the tree loss that's going to happen under the MHA ordinance. Certainly, following Burgess's executive order is totally consistent with the scope of the EIS, and that order said that we'd be looking at putting in place the in-lu fees, also tracking tree loss and replacements. One of the things you need to do in this process is to ensure that DCI speeds up their process, the ASAL system, their data collection system to track tree loss and replacement so we can have a better idea of the impact going on here. You looked at doing the in-lu fee for setting up the residential small lots that, according to the director's report, encompassed a potential of 750 acres being a single-family, 5,7200 being converted to the RSL zone, residential small lot. But there is in addition another 500 approximately acres that are going to be zoned higher than residential small lot, in which you're not talking about tree replacement occurring. And I think you might want to consider that in terms of the impact here of trees being lost are going to be also included on those lots. And I'd urge you, obviously, to proceed ahead with what we need in terms of a comprehensive update to the tree protection ordinance that's not just looking at tree, tree removal and replacement, but protecting the old trees, the large trees, the survivors. The problem is, this residential small lot putting three or four housing units on what was a single-family lot is going to result in the loss of a lot of the old trees in our city, the large trees. They're not going to be replaced or be able to be retained.
Thank you, Mr. Zemke. Ms. Barker, you're going to be followed by Sarah Jane Siegfried and then Amy Colbert.
So I have a request for the council. After listening to your discussion of all the text amendments, there's... After listening to your discussion of all the text amendments, there's four amendments that change the description and the density and the development standards in the RSL zones. So as part of the person who did a lot of that outreach that you referred to, helping our neighborhoods understand what RSL was going to look like, you're now changing the game. So you're adding a new type, apartments. You're debating how many extra units you're going to allow on RSL. And so I understand in my neighborhood, I'm going to end up back at my community meetings having to explain to people why what is showing up across the street from them is different than the actual models that they saw prepared by staff. So my request for council is you ask staff to prepare new graphics and pictures so that people will be able to give you feedback on if these four changes are what they want. Now, the garage door one, I give you, that's a, that's a good change, right? But it's the ones that up-zone or up-densify or up-increase what was already presented. I think, I don't want to say bait and switch, but it's kind of close. I know this is how the amendment process works. You come in at the last minute and you make changes, but usually they're tweaks to make something better, not usually make something different. So please consider getting something out in the hands of the public prior to the public hearing so that they can look at that and give you feedback. And the second part about that is I assume that you've done due diligence, that these increases do in fact fall within the EIS, that was the final EIS evaluation. The example of the four units on an 8,000-square-foot lot, that's not really what I'd be worried about. It's the compilations where developers buy two 5,000-square-foot lots next to each other. What can they do on a 10,000-square-foot lot? I can't get to that mentally that fast. So that would be the other piece of it that we'd want to see and share with our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Ms. Siegfried?
Hello, patient council members. I'm Sarah Jane Siegfried with Seattle Coalition for Affordability, Livability, and Equity. We appreciate some of the general amendments that have been made, including the review of the percentage of fees generated and the clawback provision to reverse the zoning if it's later declared illegal. With regard to the adequacy of the fees, we note that the council's been using a number of 110,000 as the cost of a subsidized unit with the assumption that the rest of the 300,000 per unit would be leveraged funds, mostly taxpayer funds. I note that in testimony in Olympia this week, the head of the Washington State Housing Finance Commission testified that tax credit funds are all used up. I suggest that the council needs to revisit its assumption about the number of units that the MHA fees would actually produce. I think that number is in serious doubt. What's missing in this legislation is restoring the definition of family-sized housing from three bedrooms to two bedrooms. It was redefined a couple of years ago without process. And for-profit developers are building actually zero three-bedroom rental units. And this recent change covers up the lack of three-bedroom units in the new stock or the fore-rent stock at all. There is no family-sized housing in this plan, and this needs to be addressed. This is an issue of race and social justice for large immigrant families as well. So I beg you to include that in the final legislation. Also missing is an inventory of affordable rental units, easily done by adding a box to the online RRIO inventory. We don't, can't manage what we can't count. And unless we start counting the actual number of affordable rental units in the city, we don't know what we've got. We certainly don't know what's being destroyed and what would be missing.
Thank you, Ms. Siegfried.
So please address this.
Thank you. Amy Colbert, are you still here? Amy? Amy, you're going to be followed by Russ Saunders and then Rick McLaughlin.
I am the curator of the Unity Museum at 4341 and 1/2 University Way. We're upstairs. It's a very small museum, but we're a nonprofit cultural institution, exploring through free exhibits, free coffee and pastry, and free exchange of ideas, the prospects for peace and unity in our modern world. This unity cannot be gained by gentrification and conformity, but must look for unity and diversity. Now, the museum is dependent on individual contributions, and we have a fully volunteer staff. And this works as long as the rents are kept down. I fear that if the University Way becomes a high-rise neighborhood, all the rents will be up and we'll be out somewhere else where we have no diversity. Let us please, at least, keep this one street and let it continue to thrive and to exemplify what it means to find unity and diversity.
Thank you. Russ? Followed by Rick.
Thank you for hearing me, city council. I'm with, I'm with my family's business, Handy Andy Rental. We're celebrating 40 years on Aurora come this year. We've been there. And we've seen Aurora through its ups and downs. And the rezoning to the classification of neighborhood commercial is a safety issue. And it's not, it will deteriorate the area even more. I provided a packet to Noah here that he will give to each of you with photos and stuff. But I think we didn't, with this planning, you didn't take into consideration the Freight Master Plan. If you look through that, Aurora's different. It's the largest transportation route north of Seattle via, with the exception of I-5. And it's expected to grow and become even more trucks going up and down it. It's also classified as a bottleneck in that plan. It's also classified as a high-accident corridor for trucks. And then you can also see how restricted the sidewalks are. They're only six foot wide in most places. Buildings are built right to the edge. There's no room for buffer for pedestrians because the only way to do that is what ALOV, the group, kind of drew up, which is to take a lane out of each direction of Aurora, which isn't possible because the state patrol, or state won't allow that. There is density available that we did not take advantage of around Oak Tree Cinemas and around, between that and the new North Gate crosswalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick, you're going to be followed by Rosa Sew and then Sandra Chon? I can't read your last name, Sandra, I apologize.
Hi, my name is Rick McLaughlin, President of U District Small Business Association. I'm here because you guys all speak about wanting to help small businesses, and right now you have a chance to. We've put forth an amendment to remove the AV from the upzone. It's at high, high-risk of displacement, a lot of women and minority-owned businesses. I'm asking you guys to all sponsor this event and stand up and, you know, put your words to action and care. I know density is important to you, but the U District is already going to be four times more dense. At what point is density enough? And at some point, you've really got to stand up and assess what the existing community and culture is and care about it. And, you know, you guys were talking about being intellectually consistent. Well, in my opinion, intellectually consistent should be changed to consistently sad because if this is your viewpoints towards the city, it saddens me. At the end of the day, you got to care about who's here now and not just about, you know, gentrification at all costs. So I'm here today to ask you to please sponsor an amendment to help save small businesses. They need help, you know? We should be talking about ways to help these, you know, businesses out, not ways to increase rents and property taxes on them. And that's the fastest way to gentrify small business, commercial districts, is to upzone them. And when you upzone them, the property taxes get passed down to the small businesses through triple net. And everybody knows this, you know this. So please, stand up for them, sponsor the amendment, and remove the AV from the upzone. Thank you for your time.
Rosa, you're going to be followed by Sandra and then Alex Peterson.
Hi, my name is Rosa Sew, and I own and also work at Big Time Brewery. We've been on the AV for the past 30 years. We are a minority-owned, women-owned business, and we employ other majorities and women as workers, servers, and cooks. The proposed upzone of the AV after the most recent upzone of our neighborhood just two years ago will place increased pressure on our ability to remain on the AV and employ our workers. As we expressed in the survey of small businesses completed two years ago, we are very concerned about the upzone of our main shopping street. We ask the council to carefully consider the impact to our small business and to follow our small business along the AV. Please do not increase the building height along the AV so that we'll be forced to close our businesses. And I also wanted to note, yesterday, I stopped by another small business on the AV called Hair Comb owned by a woman named Ann, and she's been on the AV for 19 years now, and I think this will be her 20th year if she can make it. But due to the possibility of the upzone, she, her landlord will not re-sign a lease with her, so she might be forced out of her business, and she's on month-to-month right now. So it was heartbreaking because she really wants to make it to 20 years, but that might not happen, so. And she, previously to owning her business on the AV, she worked at a hairmaster on the AV that's no longer there, so then she decided to open her own hair salon. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rosa. Sandra, you're going to be followed by Alex Peterson and then Chris Warner.
Hi, my name is Sandra. I'm here on behalf of Pho Tai Tai, who has been on the AV for 18 years. In speaking with my neighboring small business owners, we're all very concerned about the impacts to our ability to remain on the AV if the second upzone to the U District in two years is passed by the council. We rent our commercial space and fear being displaced by increasing development. Already, there are construction cranes and more plans for high-rise buildings, like the proposed 24-story building project just on the other side of our shared alley. This project and many others will surely increase our rent. As you can imagine, serving the students and other customers in the U District for these many years, we have very tight margins, and it is a struggle to remain on the AV. Think of how the upzone to the AV will force our family-owned business to make a difficult decision to remain on the AV or leave like so many other businesses have already had to do so. Please do not upzone the AV. We can work together on how to support the unique small businesses that make the U District special. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex, you're going to be followed by Chris Warner and then Ray Alanis.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Alex Peterson, and with deep respect for the legacy of the city council, I ask you to amend this legislation today by listening to the thoughtful input of your constituents, the people living and working in the communities now. With limited time, I'll highlight one important example. My family and I have lived near the University District for the past 12 years. Before I worked for Councilmember Tim Burgess, I walked every day to work in the U District. And because I'm hopeful that you do support small local businesses, I ask that you preserve at least one street, the main street in the heart of the U District, University Way Northeast, which we lovingly refer to as the AV. Yes, it makes sense from a city planner's perspective to upzone next to reliable transit, but the details matter. You've already upzoned everywhere else in the U District, but the AV is unique. The AV is historic. Please respect the data about the AV, the data carefully compiled by former city council member Peter Steinbrock, which highlights the risks of displacing small local businesses from the AV. As you know, small local businesses already struggle against the forces of displacement. Their taxes and fees go up, they lose customers when the streets are torn up. And as we see throughout our city, when small local businesses are displaced, they are often, too often, replaced with chain stores, without soul, without history, and without community connection. In addition to preventing displacement, we are seeking greater trust and transparency with the environmental impact statement process. For example, the AV was removed from the original upzone of the U District for good reasons, and those reasons have not changed. Yet policymakers slipped the AV into today's legislation.
Thank you, Alex.
Legislation that pertains to different university, different urban villages in different areas of the city.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Chris, you're going to be followed by Roy and then Brooke Broad.
Hi, my name's Chris Weimer. I'm here from Magus Bookstore in the University District. We've been there for 40 years this year. I'd just mostly like to echo what everyone else regarding the AV has said. It's, you know, we're not the only small business that's been there for a very long time. The AV is very heavily populated by small businesses that do create a very unique experience in the district that myself and everybody else who's moved to this town has seen when they've come here. And it's, you know, our rents have gone up over 50% in the past couple of years, and obviously, that's a problem everybody shares. But, you know, a radical rezone is going to make it impossible for most of the small businesses to stay there at all. It will homogenize that neighborhood beyond recognition, and it's hard to see with the amount of other density that is allowed around that neighborhood that what does make the neighborhood unique needs to be plowed under to make way for something that is already available. Again, I just echo what others have said, and thank you for your time, and I hope you will consider reconsidering the upzone of the AV. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Roy, you're going to be followed by Brooke Broad and then David Ward and then Lisa Kuhn.
Hi, my name is Roy Alanis. I'm here to represent Aladdin Euro, Surrey, and Delhi. We've been on the AV for over 20 years, and we've watched many projects go up in the neighborhood, and we are afraid of what might happen for small businesses and families. While we hope that the new housing developments will bring more business to us, we also realize that with that comes potential negative impacts. The issue that scares us the most is a further increase in rent, where we have small businesses and being forced to close and move our business out of the U District. Many of our customers have expressed the same concern as well, and we truly hope to remain part of the U District for many years to come. We ask you to please keep the upzone off the AV as we are ready to increase building heights. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm not seeing Brooke come forward. David Ward, are you still here? David? David, you're going to be followed by Lisa Kuhn and then Frank Fay.
I would like to encourage a citywide policy of no net loss through one-for-one replacement. The FEIS says there's a high risk of displacement for parcels likely to redevelop. Of the 10,400 single-family parcels that OPC identified as likely to redevelop, over 6,000 of them, or over 60% are in South Seattle, Southeast Seattle, and, and South Park and Westwood Highland Park. And that's the blue on this map are the single-family parcels in, in South Seattle. That is nearly every, and those are urban villages that are 50% to over 85% people of color. As you can see, it's nearly every single-family parcel in those areas. And that means displacing thousands of people of color, the primary long-term communities of color in Seattle. In addition, the EIS also says that losing even one cultural anchor or a cultural institution can lead to destabilization and displacement of communities of color. And as you can also see with the red, the OPC has identified nearly all of the commercial properties in Southeast Seattle, almost 400 parcels along Rainier, and then hundreds more in other areas. So why, the reason why we need an enforceable policy of one-for-one replacement is without it, it will decimate the Seattle's most significant communities of color.
Thank you, David. Lisa?
I did have a couple of seconds more. I'd just say I support, I support B6, commonly known as Clawback, and I say no upzones on the AV.
Thank you, David.
Since it's not in the EIS. Since it's not in the EIS.
Thank you, David. Lisa, you're going to be followed by Frank Fay and then Marty Coystro.
Okay, I'm Lisa Kuhn. I'm going to do this quickly. Okay, Amendment B6, the Clawback. Yes, please, thank you to Councilmember Herbold. The reason why we should, we need the Clawback, Boeing, the huge tax breaks they got to supposedly keep jobs in this city, there were no Clawbacks, and let's all remember what happened with that. Okay, so, today, in the West Side Seattle newspaper, Gene Garden, copies for everybody, you may want to read it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Frank, you're going to be followed by Marty Coystro and then Steve Rubsella.
All right, greetings. One was struck today, as a listener, that apparently, the council, there is a certain expression on the council that apparently residents don't live in neighborhoods. They apparently live in neighborhood production, housing production zones that all we're concerned with. We're not concerned with neighborhoods, we're not concerned with that, we're just concerned with how many affordable housing units, and quite, which I say, a trivial amount of affordable housing units that we can apparently wring out of this legislation. As several speakers have already pointed out, it's not even clear that the amount of affordable housing units in this legislation will replace those that are displaced. But what is clear about this legislation is it will not, is it will replace the residents of those neighborhoods, it will replace the communities of those neighborhoods, and it's pretty clear, it will not bring back any of the low-income people, anybody who cannot afford a really large salary. This will just gentrify neighborhoods, it will not advance any social, racial and social justice agendas. That said, I would support several things. I do support all the amendments that try and once again restore, not go, that restore from low-rise to RSL, it's at least a better step. I support, I would support amendments that are not there, that if you really want something that fits into neighborhoods, we need to deal with some reasonable setbacks, and definitely we need to have a very strong Clawback provision. There's good chance that this will be sued by a lot of people, and it needs to be protected.
Thank you, Frank.
Thanks.
I assume that Mr. Coystro has left. Patience, are you offering to speak in his stead? I've got you signed up here in a couple of minutes. Do you mind just being patient, and we'll get to you in order? Okay. Thank you.
I believe her name.
Steve, yes. Thank you, thank you. I did, I did not get that joke, but I, I get it now. Thank you for your patience, patience. Steve Rubsella, are you here still? I'm not seeing Steve. How about Patricia Valentine? Patricia, you're going to be followed by Natalie Williams and then Reverend Pat Simpson.
This mass extinction of people of color, AKA the MHA, will be right up there with the fall of Chief Self, Japanese internment, and redlining. That will be your legacy. More immediately, pigs get rich, hogs get slaughtered. When you come from a place of corruption and greed, the universe levels the playing field, taking the key players out of the game, Murray, Allen, now Bezos, members of this council. Because you've all chosen to be a hog, destroying people's lives, promoting fear and misery with the threat of displacement. The only way out of this mess is to do the right thing. I request that you amend the MHA and not upzone the 23rd and Jackson Urban Village. I urge you to create an anti-displacement plan for your diverse neighborhoods. Councilmember Sawant, to fight to avoid displacement for those deserving seniors at House Yon while turning a blind eye to all the other seniors in District 3 who are facing displacement is nothing less than political grandstanding. Sarah Maxenna, the MHA is not an anti-displacement tool. Nice try, not gonna work. Please use your brilliant mind to create a plan that truly helps people avoid displacement. Mike O'Brien, yours is a plan that can help homeowners avoid displacement and could bring our priced-out essential workers, firefighters, nurses, teachers, police, back to the city where they serve and where they belong. Good luck, I wish you success. My fellow homeowners, you have nothing to fear but fear itself. The universe has our back.
Thank you, Patricia. Natalie? Natalie Williams? I'm not seeing Natalie Williams coming forward, so we'll move to you, Reverend Simpson. And Reverend Simpson, you're going to be followed by Cory Crocker and Doug Campbell.
I'm here from University Temple United Methodist Church, going on 130 years in the University District, to speak up for our neighbors on the Ave. This is a commercial neighborhood that's working for longtime businesses, just to be hyper-local on 43rd. The Shigas Imports Store since before the World's Fair in '62. Woolly Mammoth Shoes have been there since 1970. Samir's has been selling schwarmas for 42 years, and they're barely making it through the construction. But it's also working for new businesses. Right on the corner, Lois Coe is selling handmade ice cream for three years, even in the winter, and employing a lot of students. It's working for large businesses, too. CVS moved in on the block with a big pharmacy in an existing building, and going up north, Target seems to think they can make money by building a brand-new store lower than the existing height limits. So it's working. The U District has already put in to the pipeline a massive amount of MHA system contributions from projects already planned, at considerable cost to the neighborhood. The displacement of housing has already been named. So let's end the speculation and the uncertainty, just leave the Ave out of the rezone, keep the current height limits, and keep our already thriving urban village's heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Cory and then Doug.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Cory Crocker, and I'm a small business owner and 30-year resident of the U District. While many of us welcome increased density, we hope for and have been actively advocating for the public benefits to keep our neighborhood livable. Approved two years ago, the first U District rezone brought high-rise development to an area at high risk of displacement, and we were the first neighborhood to require affordable housing through the MHA program. Missing, however, are the concurrent benefits promised to citizens in the Growth Management Act. One benefit that we already have, and one that we risk losing with the second rezone of the, of the U District, are our unique small businesses along University Way Northeast. Allow me to put their concerns into perspective. Proportionally, this, the average height of the buildings of the Ave is about 17 feet. The current zoning is about 65 feet. The upzoned height of buildings immediately across the alley from the buildings along the Ave is 320 feet. It's a massive increase. So you can, you can imagine the development pressure is intense, it's already impacting small businesses along the Ave, some of which have already left, and some we're about to lose. A majority of them are owned by women, people of color, they're small, they're, they rent their spaces, and they're legacy ineligible businesses, so they're vulnerable. We have a special case along the Ave, it is a prime candidate for historic district, and it deserves preservation. We've already given significantly to welcome new residents through the MHA program. We ask you to please help us save the Ave by keeping it out of the second upzone of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, you're going to be followed by Frank Jones and then Leo Brennan.
Hello, my name's Doug Campbell. I'm owner of Bulldog News. My wife and I opened the store in 1983, and I would like to ask you to consider the U District holistically. The U District has been extremely welcoming to increased density. In fact, I would doubt there's any neighborhood other than downtown that will contribute more in MHA fees to the city than the University District. There are already nine towers either under construction or being built in the part of the U District that has already been upzoned. What we're talking about here is a small number of half-block faces on University Way Northeast. The Ave is the heart of the U District, and it has served a unique purpose in the U District for generations. The small business impact has been spoken to, but there are also 200 naturally low-income unit housings on the Ave, which would all be threatened by increased density or increased heights on the Ave. Right now, proposal after proposal is being put through on parts of the neighborhood that are outside of the Ave. There are no proposals that I'm aware of by developers on the Ave under the current zoning, and we do not need the additional pressure, given all the density we've taken on in the rest of the neighborhood, on the remaining commercial street in our district with many vulnerable businesses and vulnerable housing units. So, for, for generations, the Ave has been the place, and the U District has been this place where young freshmen get their first experiences of personal freedom, intellectual and artistic adventure, and we don't need to have this one last piece of the U District be corporatized. The U District needs to be valued for the unique role, which has always played in the city, and to see this role treasured and preserved.
Thank you, Doug.
Please don't upzone the Ave.
Frank, Frank Jones, are you here? Frank Jones. Okay, how about Leo Brennan? Leo, you're going to be followed by Patience Malaba.
Hello, yes, my name is Leo Brennan. Me and my family have a house in the Roosevelt neighborhood located three blocks south of the Roosevelt Light Rail Station. Our property is currently sealed family and is projected to go rezoned to LR1 or LR2 as part of the city initiative Roosevelt Urban Village MHA rezone. We are in favor of this and wish to get it approved of the higher LR2 zoning. We feel, but our property is located next to proposed NC 55 and 75 zoning, which we feel the transition will be too large, and our property should match the higher NC 75 to make the whole block the same zoning. We're asking the city to add these seven properties, there's just seven little lots in that block. When they're considering the supplemental rezone process, they're considering after the rezoning process, but we'd appreciate, we just think that the LR2 going to NC 75 is just too much, and that there's only just seven little lots there, and I think it'd be more appropriate to keep the lot all the same. Thank you, and thank you for your work.
Thank you, Leo. Patience, you're going to be followed by Elaine Noniman and then Charlie Laffam.
Good afternoon, council members. The Patience does not come with a name, but I try. I'm Patience with the Housing Development Consortium, and I'm also here representing Seattle for everyone. First of all, I want to congratulate you all on getting the huddle before us on the item that was published yesterday as required by the hearing examiner's ruling as part of the partial remand. And then secondly, thank you for supporting the Development Standards Amendments that were proposed, most of which we support, especially those that are adding development capacity, and we look forward to the final resolved ones that were packed today. And then, as it relates to the amendment discussions that you heard, thank you for raising the concerns that you did, especially for areas that are near transit, near open spaces, near jobs, near schools. Because if we're going to talk about being an equitable city, we need to be focusing on who's living near those areas and how we're helping, especially families that are not making anything beyond 60% area median income to be able to live in those areas. And I just want to say that we also need to pay attention to whose voice we're listening to. Most of these amendments were brought forward by community members that have the surplus time, the surplus resources to engage with you. The people who are most at need do not have the time or ability to do this. So it's important that we center on the people who are most vulnerable in our community and prioritize that this legislation will produce the homes that make us as a city safe, affordable, and inclusive of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Patience. Elaine?
Elaine Noniman from District 3 Madison Miller. I'm a homeowner there. Our particular block is going from a single-family to LR1. We asked for RSL, but we can, we'll live with what, what that is. But it means I am going to build everything I can on my property and make it affordable, because anybody that buys my property is not going to do that, any property. And the city fails to recognize that it has a responsibility to partner, provide incentives for private and public partnerships for affordable housing, also to pay attention to the need for cooperative housing, the need for cohousing. Those are solutions as well, and I've never heard any of that in this because there's no imagination whatever in this. What I do hear is we're talking about working families, and we're talking about families and multifamily, and in fact, the housing that you're talking about, I oppose a two-text amendment to densify what is already presented for RSL, because we are already seeing what those kinds of impacts are. There's no alleyways, there is no parking, there is no space around the buildings, it is not kid-friendly, there is, reducing the size of the units means absolutely it's not going to be affordable to families. And the, the expectation that you're selling in this that is getting support for MHA is, oh, you will have the opportunity to live there. Affordable housing that the people that we see on the streets sleeping are, are going to be able to live in this place. No, none of it is going to be affordable. It is an incentive to developers to max out their profits. And the amount of fees that they're paying is extremely
Thank you, Elaine.
disproportionate.
Charlie? Char, hold on for a second, Charlie. Charlie, you're going to be followed by Angela Castaneda and Matthew Mauer.
I'm Charlie Laffam. I'm here representing the King County Labor Council and the 100,000-plus workers that we represent, but really representing the entire labor community, because unions have universally supported this legislation, because our members, year after year after year, have been priced out of living in Seattle. And the ones that can live in Seattle, they, they're seeing their rents go up, they're seeing rents taking up more and more of their paychecks, they're seeing the dream of ever being able to buy a house go away. And so, we just want to thank every one of you for being committed to solving this problem, committed to this legislation over the years, even on days like today, staying, staying focused on the goal that we're trying to accomplish. And so, you know, obviously, we're so excited to see this finally getting close to the finish line, and as we get into the final couple of weeks, and as you're voting on this, please consider the underlying problem that we're all trying to address, that we're in a crisis, we're in a housing crisis, and people cannot afford to live in this city. So do everything you can to maximize the amount of housing in this city, to bring costs down. Don't, not to downzone, but don't minimize the amount of upzone that we can do, because we know how hard it has been to get to this point, and this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to make our city more affordable. So just, just remember that as you vote, and thank you again for your commitment to solving our housing crisis. Thanks.
Thank you, Charlie. Charlie, I have an extra jacket back at the office, just in case you need one. It's a bold fashion choice to have the, the short sleeves on a snowy day. Angela Castaneda, Angela, are you still here? How about Matthew Mauer? Matthew, are you still here? Mark Sherberg? Mark, you're going to be followed by Brittany Bole and then Darby DeCombe.
Mr. Chair, as he makes his way up, may I just say thank you to the Martin Luther King County Labor Council for their work on the Seattle Building Trades Letter, SEIU 775, SEIU 1199, AMI 17, 751, Teamsters 117, for the joint letter that they sent in support as well. I know that they represent all of those crews well. I know that they represent all of those crews well. Thank you for that letter.
Thank you for your patience, Mark. Go ahead.
To reduce the risk of displacement for all, please work to obtain exemption from property tax increases specifically related to the proposed upzones until an upzoned urban village parcel is either sold, transferred, or developed for increased density. It is important to remember that these upzones were not sought by the urban village communities. Rather, these upzones are being imposed by city government under MHA. Initially, Ed Murray intended to spread the burden of added density throughout Seattle by allowing duplexes and triplexes in all Seattle single-family neighborhoods. But when he experienced significant negative feedback to this idea, he decided to concentrate such added density within urban villages, imposing mandatory upzones on just 6% of all Seattle single-family homeowners. Consequently, 6% of Seattle single-family homeowners are to be burdened with significantly higher density for the public benefit of the entire city. As such, it is appropriate that Seattle give back to the urban villages. A targeted property tax exemption from highest and best use is an appropriate way to make urban village living more affordable, minimize displacement, and show appreciation for the targeted sacrifices required of the urban village residents under MHA. When people of the urban villages are not living under the added risk
Thank you, Mark.
and pressure and reality of being taxed out of their housing
Thank you, Mark. I'm sorry.
then Seattle becomes a more livable, inclusive, and affordable city.
Thank you, Mark. Brittany Boullet, Brittany, are you still here? How about Darby DeCombe? Bonnie Williams? Bonnie, you're going to be followed by Chris Lehman and then Eve Keller.
That was a really tall one. Good afternoon. This is a long one today. Okay. I'm here on a mission. I went, on January 24th, I attended the Seattle Planning Commission meeting. And I don't usually go, not very many people that are just residents attend. I was listening to a presentation on the Director's Report, the Neighborhood Plan Element Update. And this report was presented by Jeff Wentland and Lish Whitson. I leaf through this. This goes back to a summarization of open houses in October of 2017, which is a summary of the feedback they got when it was, when we were asked as neighborhoods to craft our own policy for comp plan amendment language to override neighborhood plans. That's the importance of this. There is a, so there was, I was at both open houses, both in West Seattle and in the North End. I went to both. And when I looked through, when I looked through the report, I saw this for Wallingford with a header. And we had three poster boards and there were "Craft Our Own Policy" D-stickers left all over everything. So throughout the report, other neighborhoods had more accurate information. I wouldn't say it was all accurate. But if you're going to ask neighborhoods to craft their own policy and then there's no background and there's no communication to the bodies that are going to make decisions on changing the neighborhood plan language, there's something really wrong in this outreach because our messages did not get passed on. If you're asked to craft your own policy, you ought to be able to have some input on policy. When I went to the Planning Commission, they said they were, there's two pages or three pages of language, new language that you're going to vote on. We said protect single family, which is not what they want to hear.
Thank you.
Or we said we need formal planning. We've not heard back. I have actual photos of the poster boards. I need to get the report and those pages removed to correct the record. And I will be following up. Possibly Noah could help me.
He was just whispering some ideas to me, so I would encourage you to stick around for a couple of minutes. We're almost at the conclusion of the meeting and I'm sure he'll be able to
Okay, who was submitting?
Noah was just whispering some ideas to me.
Okay, you made a correction. The second correction was wrong. You left out another poster board, so. But it's, you know, it's the messaging
Thank you, Bonnie.
and there's a disconnect from the neighborhood. That's the
Thank you, Bonnie. Chris, you're going to be followed by Eve Keller and then James Fackler? I believe it's James Fackler.
What I'm hearing is upzone, upzone, upzone. If that's the way to affordability, downtown would have the most affordable housing. MHA is little changed from the sellout that was secretly agreed on in the grand bargain. The council has not sought from its staff real affordability and livability. It has not asked, listened to the public when we have offered you sensible, thoughtful proposals. The state zoning law, inclusionary zoning law specifies relief from parking restrictions is one of the quid pro quos. You gave that away without getting any affordable housing back for it. It's a very, a better leverage point than upzones for getting affordable housing. Please listen to the Seattle Displacement Coalition about one-for-one replacement of displaced people, or at least reduce the proposed rezones and upzones to what is actually needed for affordable housing because you're upzoning more than necessary. Increase the in-lu fees a lot. They're far less than other cities and they need to be spent close to or in the neighborhoods where they're generated. Otherwise, you're using my Eastlake neighborhood as a cash cow and maybe there's going to be more affordable housing elsewhere, but not in our neighborhood. You're destroying our affordability. Finally, yes, thank you for, I hope that you will be voting for a clawback provision, but it has to be much stronger because the fact is that without a strong one, the developers will have every incentive to sue to try to defeat the affordable housing provisions, the requirements for onsite affordable housing and in-lu fees. And then they'll have the upzone without the affordability. And all this talk that you have about affordability will be lost. It has to be a lot stronger than the proposal, which is at this point just the city council would make, state an intent.
Thank you.
It's got to be in the law or else really we have to question your sincerity
Thank you.
about affordability. Thank you.
Eve Keller, you're going to be followed by James Fackler. I think it's, I'm sorry, James, that I'm mispronouncing your last name. Eve, go ahead.
Honorable councilmembers, by home location, I live five houses into District 3. By heart affiliation, as president of the Mount Baker Hub Alliance and being one of the principal community members that did the legwork to make the historic designation of Mount Baker Park a reality, I self-designate myself an honorary District 2 member. Thanks to President Harrell for supporting the amendments to preserve the Mount Baker Park District and to preserve the plan to bridge Southeast Seattle's worst open space gap by acquiring a badly-needed neighborhood park in the Mount Baker Town Center. Councilmembers Gonzalez and Mosketa, and all of you, please remember that the Rainier Valley is one of the least-developed regions of Seattle. The eyes of the nation should be looking at this undeveloped South Seattle region within four minutes by light rail from the center of one of the hottest cities in the country. The Rainier Valley will explode with growth in the next 10 to 15 years. And affordable housing is welcome, as is mixed-use housing. But along Rainier Avenue and Martin Luther King Way, Junior Way, first, no necessary upzoning required, no additional upzoning required. Councilmembers, please support holding the bones of our Mount Baker historic district together and please find funding for accessible Mount Baker, which will enhance the livability for our residents and support the small businesses we cherish. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve. James, you're the last person who signed up to speak today. I'm looking at the audience and I'm not seeing anybody who hasn't been given the opportunity to speak, but if I'm mistaken about that and you would like to speak, please come to the other available microphone. Go ahead, James. No, no, you're fine there. I was just motioning to people who might be behind you.
Fair enough. James Fackler is the last name. Sorry about the sloppy handwriting.
No problem.
First, I'd like to thank all the councilmembers in attendance for their hard work on this, probably one of the more contentious issues in the city. My wife and I own a house in the 23rd and Union, or 23rd and Jackson area that's proposed to be rezoned. We bought it when I was working as a carpenter and my wife is a secretary and it was an affordable home at the time. You know, since then, we've watched the neighborhood change significantly and it just so happens that we're a small portion surrounded, a small group of single-family zoned houses surrounded by low-rise. We're very excited about the changes that have come to the neighborhood with more people. You know, there's things that haven't been good. There's been apartment buildings that have been torn down and there's been affordable housing that's been lost. And that's, that we see as a real travesty and it's, you know, philosophically, we would like, well, we'd like to develop our property and we want to develop it with affordable housing, but we don't see that possible with what's proposed for the rezone on our block specifically, which is residential small lot. So we're on 26th Avenue South between Norman and Charles and that is one, one single block of residential small lot that's surrounded by proposed low-rise 1 to the south, proposed low-rise 1 to the west, low-rise 1 to the north, low-rise 2 and low-rise 3 to the east. And so our concern is it really runs counter to what was the, what was the proposal or what was the, so the intent behind the MHA. You know, this is, this is a neighborhood that is going to experience a new light rail station, it's frequently served by mass transit, you know. So unfortunately, I've been able to get ahold of Councilmember Sawant to discuss this. You know, we've left multiple emails and messages and we understand that these changes are being driven by District Council.
Thank you, James.
You know, we'd just like to be able to be considered to be low-rise 1
James, we appreciate that.
Which is a small lot.
Yeah, thank you. If you leave your contact information, we can ensure that the council central staffers who are no longer at the table can circle back around with you. Individual property owners who have come forward and made those similar requests need to be covered by the analysis that the environmental impact statement has done. So we'll ask central staffers to take a look at those exact parcels that you talk about and give you some more information when we have a chance.
Okay.
So if you don't mind sticking around, we'll get your contact information.
Thank you.
Folks, that concludes five hours of discussion on this topic. I don't have anything left to say on this, but I look to my colleagues to see if they do. I'm not seeing anything. So for members of the public, we will be back here at City Hall at 5:30 on Thursday, February 21st for a public hearing and then back for consideration of possible amendments at the conclusion of our full council meeting on Monday, February 25th. We're adjourned.